Good morning. It's now 9:01 a.m. and I call this meeting to order. Carrie, can you please take role?
Chair Carvalho.
Here.
Vice Chair Downs.
Here.
Regent Ariscotta.
Here.
Regent Boylan.
Right.
Regent Brager.
Here.
Regent Brooks.
Here.
Regent Brown.
Here.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Tarkanian. You have a quorum present.
Thank you. I will now ask Regent Goodman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before beginning, we take a moment to recognize that here in Nevada, we stand on the land of the Wasishu, Wausau, Numu, Northern Paiute, Nui, Western Shoshone, and Nuwu, Southern Paiute. We take a moment to recognize and honor their stewardship that continues into today. With this recognition, we state an intention to rightfully include their voice and respect them as the 27 sovereign tribal nations of Nevada. Today, we pause to remember the lives lost and forever changed on October 1st, 2017. As we mark this anniversary, we honor the victims, survivors, their families, and all those who showed courage and compassion in the face of this tragedy. We stand together in solidarity to support one another as a community. First item on our agenda is public comment. For those who would like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter meeting ID 92849445069 and pass code 555555. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is none at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno?
Yes, ma'am, there is.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Carvalho.
Please state and spell your last name. Thank you. You have two minutes.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs, Regent and Chancellor, Kent Irving, E.R.V.I.N., Nevada Faculty Alliance. We appreciate Agenda Item 2 on fiscal exceptions. It is important for the board to provide oversight and insist on accountability for all of the institutions. What is immediately noticeable is how differently the three institutions chose to report to the board. CSN's dental program laid out its struggles to break even while providing needed services to the community. It provided a detailed accounting of revenue and expenses over time. Perhaps what is needed is for the dental industry to step up with sustainable support for a program providing dental workers. UNLV's athletics report is all narrative and no detailed breakdowns with numbers by categories of expenditures and deficits. A much more detailed analysis is needed to know where the breakdown in cost controls has occurred and what actions need to be taken. The $21 million operating deficit for FY 2024 is a major problem. UNR's report has lots of details and numbers, but scant explanation as to how the deficit for various projects will be rectified. Are those millions in delayed receipts of donor gifts actually collectible? For all of these, the overriding question is where the funds to cover the deficits are coming from and how do they affect the core academic and instructional programs of each institution? Thank you.
There is no further comment in Reno.
Thank you. Is there any public comment here in Las Vegas? Please state and spell your name and you have two minutes.
Scott Kichline, K-I-C-H-L-I-N-E. I'm here today as the Chief Revenue Officer for the Clark County Department of Aviation, speaking to you about Item Number 4. The department participated in the previous RFP process for this 42 acres of land, which is located off the end of two of our runways, partially within a runway protection zone, and of which the department already owns certain air rights over. While we were not selected, we feel that our proposal touched on many of the items mentioned in today's reference materials and the feedback from this board at your May 24th meeting. UNLV's master plan states a planning horizon of 10 years and beyond, but no master plan looks out 99 years, which is why we had proposed shorter-term leases with a phased development approach, providing flexibility for future academic development. We included initial short-term uses to address immediate needs and uses that could easily be adapted to the university's changing dynamics, and finally, the development of a much-needed aviation school or other academic facilities. We know that it's critical that this property be developed in a manner that's compatible with airport operations, the community, and the university's future, and we thank you for taking the time and consideration to do this in a thoughtful manner. If you haven't seen it, we ask that you take a look at our original proposal. The department and UNLV have had many longstanding partnerships, from the development of the Paradise Elementary School on campus, to numerous land sales, land swaps, and many, many interns, some of which work for me today, from UNLV. As your neighbor, as a community stakeholder, and as another large economic engine in Clark County, we look forward to being included in future considerations for this very important and last remaining undeveloped property on the UNLV campus. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Bill Robinson, past Chair of the UNLV Faculty Senate, I apologize for being here again. Wanted to talk about a couple Agenda items. One, of course, is the safety and security issue. You know that's my big issue. I cannot walk across my campus without somebody stopping me and asking me why we're not taking care of the security issues, taking care of mental health issues, taking care of these issues, and I'm going to continue to just come, and I'm so grateful for you keeping that on the agenda and continuing to work on it and keeping the pressure on. There is nothing that we're asking for now or is coming through these committees that we haven't asked for for 20 years. We're 10 months after the horror of that day, and we have not done much at all, in my opinion, compared to what we could and should have done on campus. Both UNR and UNLV are R1 institutions with R2 funding, and that means to be successful, we have to have very strong public processes where we set priorities, where we find efficiencies, where we know how we're doing, how we're spending that money and being good stewards of our resources, and it's my opinion that UNLV does not have that process that's participatory and open, where we can be this partner in this. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the last item, the fundraising item. Carol Harder, in 2002, started a capital campaign for $75 million a year because she was raising $50 million a year, and the capital campaign was for 75, which ended up only raising 50 million a year, but that's when it was started. That's where we are now. We're raising $50 million a year and we're posing to reset the bar to a capital campaign at $75 million a year. That needs to be absolutely, it can't happen. 75 million needs to be our norm. If we're going to do a capital campaign, it needs to be 100 million, it needs to be 125 million, and that's just what I'll say. Thank you. We got to go forward, not backward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in Las Vegas? SES, is there any public comment on the telephone? Thank you. All right, then we will move on to Item Number 2, fiscal exceptions for CSN, UNLV, and UNR. And to introduce this, I will go to Chancellor Charlton.
Good morning. Thank you for the record, Patty Charlton, Chancellor of Nevada System of Higher Education. This morning, we have asked, and I'm bringing forward a report from the three institutions, CSN, UNLV, and UNR, to discuss the status on fiscal exception items that appeared on the fourth quarter, but also to provide those institutions an opportunity to update the board on some significant either deficits in specific accounts and/or items that have been a part of this reporting for some time. As the CEO of the system, it is our responsibility to ensure that we have appropriate oversight of our financial status, and so it is for that reason that we're bringing forward these items today, and so we do appreciate the institutions for their responses and look forward to the conversation with the board this morning, and I'd like to just see if Chris Vatone has anything to add.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Chris Vatone. Other than just offering, you know, the purpose of the fiscal exception report, this is a report that presents for you accounts that are in the system's operations that end the quarter with a fiscal exception or otherwise referred to as a deficit, an account deficit, so, meaning that the program has had expenses that exceeded the revenues. After the LCB audit, we also modified that report to bring in project accounts, where there were project accounts that had account deficits as well. So the purpose of the report is to make sure that we're presenting and that the board is aware of accounts that have ending balances in the negative and for the campuses to have the opportunity to present their plans to resolve those deficits. And with that, as the chancellor mentioned, these were items from the September report that were significant and wanted to bring them back for your attention.
Thank you. So first, we will go to President Kimbler.
Yes. Bill Kimbler, President of CSN, for the record. Actually, our Vice President for Finance and Administration is going to present this report. He knows our dental faculty practice very intimately and has the details about that. We look forward to having you understand what's been going on there.
For the record, Rolando Mosqueta, interim Vice President, Finance Administration, College of Southern Nevada. And Dr. Kimbler, thank you for the introduction. The dental faculty practice is an integral part of CSN's mission. As you reviewed in the report, we provide not only a learning environment for our students, but we also serve our community. 55% of our clientele are community-based. Additionally, 25% to 30% of our clients are students, faculty, and families of faculty, and any of those individuals who do not have insurance receive a 50% discount. So again, it's the execution to that community-based involvement and service provider that CSN is executing on. The DFP has been on the fiscal exception report since 2016, so CSN recognizes that the fiscal challenges of the DFP have been ongoing, and we've implemented some measures that I think are producing some results. In the report, I stated that we have a budget, a cost-neutral strategy that we've implemented that seems to be working. We had some challenges in the last fiscal year, fiscal year '24, with the departure of some dentists that impacted production, our revenues. But aside from that, I think we've seen a flattening of the deficit in terms of adding to that number. We feel very confident that, under the leadership of Dr. Kimbler, and he's laser-focused on the accountability of our staff and faculty to address that deficit, and we also have hired Patricia Lee, and Ms. Lee is in the audience. She has over 20 years of experience managing dental practices in the private sector, and she's leveraging that experience for the DFP, and we're seeing the results. So I wanted to entertain any questions that the regents may have with regards to my comments and the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mosqueta. Are there any regents that have questions? Seeing none, I have a few.
Yes.
No, please, go ahead. Okay, all right. Okay. One, you did address the fact that you had a few dentists who left the practice. Have you replaced those dentists or how is that being managed right now?
For the record, Rolando Mosqueta, Chair Carvalho, yes. Those dentists departed in March of last year, and we have since replaced those dentists. There was a three-to-four-month gap in replacing those dentists to identify viable candidates that wanted to work at the practice. That obviously impacted revenues, but to answer your question, they've been replaced, two dentists.
Thank you. And also, this is a cost-neutral model that you have. I do wonder, and you've referenced that you really focus on underserved populations in the Valley, and I commend you for that. I think it's very important for all people to have access to quality dental care. In order to maybe help some of this deficit, is it possible for you to take private insurance or private patients at all, or is that not an area that the practice is able to look into?
We do accept private insurance and individuals who are insured outside of the Enchi insurance providers and Medicaid, Medicare, Ryan White, some of the other insurance programs that we offer and that we accept. So we do have private insurance, and those are actually insurance programs that have higher rates of reimbursement. So we're always looking to expand our footprint in that space.
I think that might be helpful in this regard. And lastly, I am wondering if you're able to give us an update on possible partnerships or collaborations with the UNLV Dental School?
Absolutely. And matter of fact, I think in two weeks, the dental faculty practice of CSN will be meeting again with our colleagues at UNLV. There has been discussion for some time with regards to a potential partnership. The parameters of that partnership are still being worked out, but in sum, CSN and UNLV are determining whether or not there's some opportunity to receive updated equipment that would allow for the CSN DFP to modernize its infrastructure, and the UNLV practice would then be able to utilize the CSN space for its patients and its instructors, and in return, CSN would be able to provide a more updated learning experience for its students. However, that doesn't necessarily address the deficit, but so we're looking at ways that there may be some collaboration that would generate some additional revenues so CSN could look to pay down that deficit, but those discussions are ongoing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Regent Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Regent Brooks, for the record, it sounds like you've got a lot of good stuff going on, right? And that this is really a point where you're pivoting and making some significant changes to improve things. What do you think, where the deficit is now, based on last quarter reporting, and do you have a forecast of where you think it will be at the end of this year, last quarter?
So, Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, Regent Brooks, the current deficit is in alignment with what we reported at the last quarter, so we haven't added to the deficit in the last couple of months. For fiscal year, end of fiscal year '25, we anticipate the deficit to be very similar to the number right now. So we don't intend to, we don't forecast or model that we're going to be chipping away at that number, but we don't feel that we're going to add to that number, based on our current revenue, our staffing, and the mix of clients that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you. Then a follow-up question would be, where do you see the practice, if you're still sitting in the same type of deficit financially? What does that look like as you continue to move on and carry this with you?
That's fair. So in the report, I stated that CSN is in a monitoring phase for fiscal year '25, so we feel the strategies we've implemented have stemmed the tide, if you will, with regards to the deficit. We feel as though the deficit will not grow anymore, and if that's the case, we're going to monitor the strategy in fiscal year '25 and begin to budget in fiscal year '26, '27, '28, and '29 to pay down a portion of that deficit in each of those fiscal years. So it will be embedded within our budgeting models for the subsequent fiscal years starting in '26.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Regent Brager.
Susan Brager, for the record, thank you for the information. One question, are there grants out there for medical equipment that you can look into, or is that not something you can do in the system?
And that's a wonderful question. Again, Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, Regent Brager, I will have to defer to my colleague, Ms. Patricia Lee, to understand better if we've explored any grant opportunities. I don't have the response on that one. This is Patricia's first Regent meeting, and she's doing awesome, and she's doing awesome.
Good morning, and my name is Patricia Lee. Yes, we have begun to explore some grants that are related to the dental assisting and the dental hygiene programs. We, as a dental faculty practice, are not qualified to be able to, we don't qualify for anything as far as grants on our own.
Okay.
But every time they receive something, then we usually get what they're giving up. So recently, they just got a grant for a couple of chairs, so we received the old chairs, and they're getting nine more chairs, and we're getting the old chairs. So we are able to upgrade and update some of our equipment, but honestly, they're chairs that are 40 years old now going to chairs that are 20 years old. So it is what it is.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I do have, and thank you for your answer, one more question. Now that you have the dentists back, this would be for their financial person. I just went blank, and I know who you are. Now that you have the dentists back, how do people, and I know you can only see so many people, but how do you get your clients? I mean, does that neighborhood around you know that you're there and that can help with their needs, or, as was stated, getting more of the insurance payee people? How do people know you're there? I know the signs up on Charleston, you can see it, but other than that, is there a marketing proposal that's not expensive because we don't want to add to your deficit, but a way to do that with a PSA or something that someone might want to do with you?
Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, Regent Brager, we have been working with our marketing team internally on a marketing campaign to get the message out that we're there and we're accepting patients and we provide quality dental care. As stated in the report, the results have been about 60 to 75 new patients per week based on the efforts of that marketing campaign with regards to the specific channels of marketing that we're utilizing to reach the community. Patricia may have some more information.
Most of our patients come basically from internal marketing. We target those patients that are good patients, that always show, that do pay, and we try to discuss with them sending their family and friends, just on the fact that usually birds of a feather flock together, so those that are good will also be good. We do have insurances that we are on their list of participating providers for. We do get a certain number of patients from them. We've been trying to target all the health fairs and faculty events so that everyone knows that, you know, we take the UMR, the state insurance, and, you know, we are trying to balance out the lower reimbursements with the higher ones. We're trying and open to all avenues.
Okay, I have no doubt that you are trying. So just even maybe information, the Bonanza High School is across the street. Maybe that's a good source of payees because they do have, if they have CCSD and that, the UMR might be part of that, which would be helpful, so just a thought.
Thank you for that, and there are certainly opportunities for us to expand the marketing efforts, and we'll be doing that soon.
Okay, I appreciate the information. And you can only see so many people with as many dentists as you have, so I appreciate the endeavors that you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a queue going, so I'm going to go to Regent Brown, then Ariscotta, then Regent Goodman, and Regent Perkins.
Regent Brager kind of touched on this, but I wanted to share that this past semester, I actually worked really closely with your most recent graduate of dental hygienist students, mostly because of the problems they were reporting to me about lack of opportunity to actually get their hours, and that was what was holding them back from graduating. So I want to, you kind of touched on the patients, but I want to talk about, like, how can we improve access for the students, knowing that this is an area that we don't have enough dental hygienists in Clark County? You have people coming through your school, but they are finding roadblocks and problems along the way, and it's disheartening to hear because they're part of a cohort, they should be graduating together, but the reports I was getting, and again, you only take the information, there's three sides to every story, right? Yours, mine, and the truth. But the amount of conversations and the amount of time I spent with this just gives me pause to say, I'm hoping that with all your plans and implementation moving forward, we can actually solve for this, and I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on how we can do that.
Yeah. Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, Regent Brown, we acknowledge and accept the fact that there's been some opportunities for us to better serve our students, not just the community in terms of the hours that were dedicated to the practice. The students have priority in the practice, so when we have Igentis students, and for those not familiar with the space, the hygiene program is adjacent to the dental faculty practice. It's separated literally by a hallway. So when we have hygiene students across the hall that need clinical hours in the DFP, the dental faculty practice, those are prioritized immediately. The challenge oftentimes is having the right patient mix for the hygiene students and our dental assisting students to walk across the hall and realize their clinical hours. And so what we need to do, as administration, what we need to do is improve that patient mix. So that means the advertising, the outreach to community partners, leveraging some of our contacts in the private sector, all of those strategies need to be implemented so we have the right mix of patients, and that way, our students can then schedule time across the hall for their clinicals. So to answer your question, we acknowledge it, we know it's existing, and we have ways to make it better.
Regent Brown, for the record, just real quick clarification, when you say patient mix, are we talking about, like, the number of years since they've been to the dentist? And is that what you're referring to?
So I didn't explain that well. Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, patient mix refers to the procedures that are being performed. So for instance, our dental assisting need very specific procedures to be exposed to and be chairside in order to fulfill their clinical hours. So if all we have scheduled for that day are teeth cleanings, then they're not able to realize those clinical hours.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quite similar to my peers of the South, a lot of the questions were answered, and I do appreciate it, Mr. Mosco. But on the supplemental material on page 3, just kind of bringing in the white elephant of the room, the approximate deficit is $821,000, if I added that up correctly. So you mentioned that the projected final number of revenue versus expenses for 2024 will not be increasing, so I know we're looking at just three months right now, but what is the projected deficit for 2025? You mentioned that it should be equivalent to what it is for 2024. So now we're looking at about a $1.6 million deficit for the combination of those two years. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, Regent Ariscotta, my reference to the deficit not increasing was, well, let me clarify. So the current ending balance in fiscal year '24 was a negative $976,000. So CSN...
$976.
Okay. So CSN anticipates that number not growing. So we do not anticipate, based on our modeling, current revenues, staffing, that we're going to exceed the approximately $975,000 deficit that we're currently in. Does that answer your question, Regent Ariscotta?
Yes, but a follow-up also, and you mentioned earlier in your presentation that the deficit for 2025 is equivalent to 2024?
So to clarify, Rolando Mosqueta, for the record, to clarify, it will not grow. So the deficit will not grow. We're not going to add to the deficit, we're not going to double the deficit, we simply will not grow the deficit. It will maintain steady at $975,000. That's what we anticipate.
That's much more settling. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Regent Perkins.
Sorry, it's a little bit of a delay.
Sorry, it's a little bit of a delay here. First of all, I'd like to say that thank you for, you were hemorrhaging money before. Now you at least got it padded down and controlling the bleeding. So I really, really appreciate that. Secondly, have you thought about a partnership or collaboration with extension? Because they do do a lot of community services and this might be a way to tackle two birds with one stone, so to speak, to get more community involvement and more community awareness and also generate more funds.
Regent Perkins, thank you. Rolando Mosketa for the record, we have not reached out to the extension, to the best of my knowledge, you know, and, and Ms. Lee confirmed that. But that's an opportunity and I will, I will take that as an action item and follow up personally.
And thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation today. We, we hope to see definite improvement. We, we want, I think it's clear, we all support this and want to see it work. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move to UNLV. President Whitfield?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Today, I'm providing an update on the deficit account and the strategic financial planning for UNLV Athletics. Joining with me today is Eric Harper, UNLV's Athletic Director, and Casey Wyman, UNLV's CFO and Vice President. They'll be here with me to be able to answer any questions that you might have. In response to recent financial pressures, UNLV Athletics, in partnership with executive leadership, has implemented a comprehensive strategy to enhance our financial stability. UNLV Athletics' primary, primary focus will be on enhancing unrestricted and restricted donations to cover key operational costs, including nutrition, pre and post-game meals, and other expenses. Last October, UNLV Athletics launched its first capital campaign with $150 million goal. And in FY '24, we raised $11.8 million with a target of $15 million annually. For FY '25, we aim to secure $3 million in cash and $12 million in pledges. The campaign will be supported by endowment income, new revenue streams, and a scholarship endowment initiative to increase funding flexibility. We anticipate a $2.4 million waterfall payment from Allegiant Stadium, and our football season tickets have already surpassed 110% of the budgeted amount, making a 90% increase over last year. To achieve a balanced budget for FY '25, we plan to reduce expenses by 8% to 10% and fill only essential positions. We're also implementing a multi-phased Get Healthy Plan to strengthen financial management and align expenses with revenue targets. The first phase enhances fiscal management through improved financial controls, increased audits, and updated budgeting processes to ensure transparency and accountability. With the recent conference realignment, UNLV has extended its membership with the Mountain West Conference for six more years, from 2026 to 2032. The new agreement includes a lump sum payment of $10 to $14 million in 2025, followed by annual payments of $1.5 to $1.8 million starting in '26. This extension ensures stability and flexibility for UNLV Athletics during a time of significant change in college athletics. And with this support, we will be better positioned to address operational debt and navigate the evolving landscape influenced by team performance, conference realignment, fundraising, and NIL developments. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions or discussions on how we can continue to support the long-term success of UNLV Athletics.
Thank you. I'll open it up to, to Regents. Regent Brown? Regent Brown for the record. When, in the supplemental information, when you talk about the 8% to 10% reduction, can you unpack that a little bit more? And can you explain how that's going to impact programs across the board?
To do that, let me ask Eric Harper, who just appears, to, to give you some additional detail on that.
Eric Harper for the record, UNLV Athletics. To answer your question, Regent Brown, that will be done specifically in the space on the administrative side, not on the student-athlete side. So we will be looking at reducing operational expenditures specifically on administrative side, in some cases, like the attendance of professional development at conferences and so forth. So to eliminate travel when there's virtual opportunities available, which is some of the things that we would do across the board with all of our administrative staff. So, and, and trying to reduce our expenditures, expenditures from airfares, hotel, per diems, all those different things as you accumulate over the course of the year, that, that will be able to be reduced.
That, Regent Brown for the record, that's helpful. There was some illusion that there might be positions cut?
I have not filled some positions that are not necessarily immediately essential. I will not cut any positions that are developed directly related to the student-athlete from medical, health and wellness, nutrition, and those particular spaces that directly impact the student-athlete. I will not be reducing or eliminating any of those positions.
So maybe the, Regent Brown for the record, for maybe the sports that aren't revenue generating, we're not going to see a cut in those programs just because?
No.
Okay. That's good to hear.
No.
You know, I, President Whitfield did just talk about the Mountain West pending payment of $10 to $14 million. I mean, there's a real chance that that money will be held up with, by court cases. So are we relying on that money to-
There's-
-pay down this deficit?
Eric Harper for the record, UNLV. We have, we have, we are working with our campus CFO and my new CFO on a structured plan, which we already have in place. Those funds, when they arrive, there's two separate funds on that. There's one is considered a buyout, which is going to be paid for by the institutions that left the Mountain West. And then there's a poaching and exit fee that is responsibility of the PAC 12. So those would be the ones that will have more litigation involved in it. But the other funds, which will, which will be roughly between $18 to $20 million per institution of those five institutions that left. Right now, the projection is $20 million for each one of those institutions. So there's $100 million that will be sitting there. And they're, they're going to be, based on our conference communications, those will be sparse out based on the payment that, when they come in.
Well, that's good. That's comfort to know that there's at least, we can rely on the, maybe it's 10, not the 14, but that's good to know. My last question here is actually related to some of the ancillary events that happen, NFR, Super Bowl, and Summer League. How are those funds that UNLV receives, how do they get attributed to the operating budgets?
Those, those funds on NFR go directly towards the Thomas &amp; Mack Center. And then, and once Thomas &amp; Mack Center has all of their expenses covered, then those funds are put into a reserve in a Thomas &amp; Mack line items. Obviously, I oversee the Thomas &amp; Mack and Mike Nukem is our Executive Director. So any of those funds that are ancillary of that particular nature go directly to cover the expenses for Thomas &amp; Mack Center. And anything in, in additional revenue will be put into reserves in the Thomas &amp; Mack line item.
So, but doesn't NFR also use that backfield?
Yes, all of the, that, that is a, a, a field that is under the, the guidance of that particular week of the Thomas &amp; Mack Center. So the Thomas &amp; Mack Center is paying any expenses for that field is paid for through the NFR with Las Vegas event and LBCBA.
Got it. Okay. And then for the Super Bowl, hosting the Super Bowl team, and then Summer League?
NBA Summer League, again, goes into the Thomas &amp; Mack line items as revenues and expenses and paid for through that space. And then on the Super Bowl, there was an honorarium that did not come into Athletics. I was, that was an agreement that was done prior to my sitting in the seat as Athletic Director. And from what I understand, my predecessor worked a different deal with that, and I was not involved in that.
So did UNLV not receive any, UNLV as a whole will step out of Athletics. Did they receive any payments for hosting the Super Bowl?
My understanding is yes, but I think I'd have to check with CFO Casey Wyman as to where that came into the institution.
Yeah, would you mind?
For the record, Casey Wyman, CFO, UNLV. So I, honestly, I don't know that one off the top of my head. And so if you could, Regent Brown, indulge me, I will take an action and then respond to the Regents directly, follow up on this meeting unless I get it via my team in the next short, short while.
Perfect. And then I realize I said Summer League, which is important, but I actually meant USA Men's Basketball, who did use the Fertitta Center. So did-
Yes.
We love to host them. We'd love to have them back. Love the footage. But I am curious if we received-
They used the Menon Hall.
Menon Hall, too.
USA Basketball, yes, they used the Menon Hall. So that is a lease, that is a rental agreement that goes into the Thomas &amp; Mack. Because Thomas &amp; Mack, Mike Nukem oversees the facilities associated with UNLV Athletics. And in those rental fees, those are, we have a rental line item that it goes into that. And then we will put that wherever it's needed to be.
Okay.
It's a, it's a rental, it's rental revenue, I should say.
But it goes, it's Menon Hall, which is next to the Thomas &amp; Mack, but it goes into the Thomas &amp; Mack?
It would be, it would be considered, we have a other revenues line item that we have. And for those few days, I don't know what the exact number was, but I can get that for you and, and respond back to you for, in more detail.
I was just trying to unpack the 20.6, which I know you talk about the, in the supplemental. I'm just trying to unpack it and see how, with all these incredible things that happen on campus, and it is something to be proud of. These are great partnerships. But if it's not actually adding money towards our operating budget, maybe the value add, I, I don't know. I'm, you know, we, we got to a point. And so I'm just trying to unpack it. But I appreciate it.
I can give more detail for you, Regent Brown.
Appreciate you.
Sure.
Thank you. Regent Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. Regent Brooks for the record. So I think it would be, I think it's important to note that while there is deficit, the, when we talk about freezing positions of, of hire, that's, that's really across the state. That's not something that's unique to the athletic department or UNLV. That has more to do with the president's very specifically asking the board to vote for the COLA increase and acknowledge that that's something that was, was needed throughout the state for faculty members. Is there, in, in the conversation that you, you were having with Regent Brown, it seems like there's certainly an awful lot of things that are moving at once regarding not only UNLV, but the athletic department. Perhaps, I'm just wondering, maybe in our December meeting, we can get a follow-up with you regarding where, where we are with athletics and deficit?
Yes, absolutely. Eric Harper for the record, absolutely. Regent Brooks, we can get some more detail for you on that and, and unpack that as, as Regent Brown mentioned a moment ago. We can unpack that further, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And Chair, may I just mention one thing?
Yes.
I think, Regent Brooks, you're bringing up a, a real interesting point, as Regent Brown was. And correct me if I'm wrong in thinking about this, but you have to think that it's, it's almost, it's two different cost centers. Thomas &amp; Mack is kind of its piece, and then Athletics is a different piece. And so the pincers that you were bringing up, Regent Brown, is about, it is a business. I mean, that's, that, that facility is this incredible business that lots and lots of people are paying attention to. It gets used for things, and then there's a budget for it. And then Athletics is a separate one for it. To Regent Brooks's point about the, about the, the freezing positions, that ends up being done both, but they don't necessarily overlap. There are two different cost centers where there has to be strategic management for personnel for each one of those. And so that first piece of it really was about the athletics department and the, the freezing that we need to do of positions there. And then for Thomas &amp; Mack, there's other activities that go on, strategy that's used in terms of managing that as well, if that adds any clarity.
Thank you. I think President, or I'm sorry, Chancellor Charlton has a question.
Great. Thank you for the record, Patty Charlton, Chancellor. Regent Brooks, just for, so that you're aware, as these accounts remain in a deficit status, they will continue to come back to the BFF at the quarterly meeting. And so these will continue to be reported and the opportunity for the institution to provide updates and for the Regents to ask questions at each of the quarterly meetings. And we can always do a special request as needed.
Yeah. Regent Brooks for the record. Thank you, interim Chancellor. What, sometimes, based on how things are brought to committees, sometimes items get lost for the entire board. And so I think on something as important as this, maybe it would be normal for something like this to come through a specific committee, but also there should be some type of reporting that comes to the full board would be my suggestion.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
And just Eric Harper for the record, on, on those positions that are, that are, that are being held, those are self-supporting budgets, the ones that for the state were different. We have some self-supporting budget, lines that, and positions that we will, that we are holding on.
Regent Brooks for the record, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I just, I thought it was important to, to make sure that there's some type of distinction that's made, particularly when we talk about COLA, that this is not, again, the athletic department is not a unicorn in this. This is something that's happening throughout the state, whether it's, there's different divisions of what this looks like on a campus or not. It's, it's normal right now. And so that was, that was the point that I wanted to be able to make. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate it. As previously mentioned, I believe it was by President Whitfield. So according to reports, UNLV will receive lump sum payments of $10 to $14 million and agree to stay in the Mountain West. But you also will receive an additional 1.5 until 2020, excuse me, 2032. $14 million plus $12 million, we can do that, '26. But also, I just want to touch upon a couple items. According to additional reports, the full, the four schools departing the Mountain West will be paying up to $20 million each in exit fees, totally, obviously, $80 million. Bear with me, gentlemen, I'm going to get to my question. So it was agreed upon that UNLV receive 24.5% of the aforementioned $80 million. Not a mathematician, that takes, that's approximately $19.6 million. So you have $19.6 million plus $14 million plus $12 million. So now we're looking at $45.6 million projected, depending on going through legal action and all the other issues involved. But then I go down to page 24 of 42 from the March 1st quarterly report, when we're looking at budgeted to actuals. Seems that the, the UNLV Athletic Department, it took an unfortunate amount of time to realize that, that money was being hemorrhaged. And my question to Athletic Director Harper is, in order to circumvent the problem, what are the main, what is the contingency plan here? So we have a projected $45.6 million to be infused into UNLV Athletic Program. But I'm looking, once again, page 24, 45, from the March 10, March 1st report, is that the five-year budget projections continue to not balance? So will that $45.6 million put the UNLV Athletic Department back into a positive form? Or will it just be status quo where the athletic, the athletic department continues to lose money?
Regent Ariscotta, Eric Harper for the record. It is, it's actually five institutions in the Mountain West that have left to go over to the PAC 12. And roughly, that is that $20 million. Okay. And then the remaining, based on the litigation relative to the poaching and exit fees, will be somewhere between 1.5 and 1.8 additional for the department. We don't know that that, that, what that final number is. But it's actually, it's not $46 million. And it's, it's more like $23 to $26 million, not $46. And as we continue to move forward relative to our budgets, we have reduced our budget this year to meet, to have more balance with actuals to expenditure, expenditures, actual revenues to expenditures. And that will be the case moving forward. And working with our campus CFO and my new CFO, who has a very strong background in analytics relative to budgets, he's worked outside of college athletics. So he has a, he has a different lens that I was happy to have come in. And he is my, unfortunately, my third CFO since I took over. They've all gone on to bigger, bigger jobs at bigger institutions. So I applaud them for that. But we will continue to move forward and, and, and other revenue coming forward will be, we play at SC, we play at University of Washington, those types of things will, will have influxes of revenues. of revenues for us on guarantee games, and to, and as we can, again, as we continue to move forward, we will, we will be holding expenses down, maximizing revenues as we have with football tickets this year, with four home games remaining of three very, very interesting and exciting opponents, to build some more revenues. And then we will not, we will start to build in a, hopefully a surplus each year to help dig into these deficits as we move forward.
You just answered my second question, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have one point that I'd like you to clarify. So Thomas and Mack is completely separate from athletics, and so these numbers have absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about with Thomas and Mack, because I believe they've been on the exception report as well, but as a completely separate unit.
Correct. There is two separate budgets that, and it's been that way since I took over as the athletic director, and it was that way initially. Thomas and Mack reported to previous CFO prior to, even prior to Gene Vok, was reporting to Jerry Bomati. And when President Jessup was here, it moved underneath athletics, and now Thomas and Mack reports to athletics, but the budgets have been kept as separate.
Okay, so any reserve from Thomas and Mack doesn't go into athletics generally, right?
We, it does not generally, but we do have the ability to utilize those reserves into Thomas and Mack to move over to athletics. It's not the desired way to do it, but if that's what we need to do at some point in time, we would, we do have that flexibility.
Okay. It looks like I have a question from Regent Goodman, and then I'll go back to Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, thanks for being here, and congratulations on Saturday. Let's not forget that. I wanted to just, the, like, our cultivation of our donors, like, how is that going? I, you know, I went to UNLV, there was always this kind of family, there was always this great cultivation of the donors. There would be events in the Cy Red Room, and are we taking advantage of this incredible venue that we have at the Allegiant Stadium with the torch? And can we do more there with our donors to maybe do events before games to, again, bring back this kind of family that, you have such a great team, you have such a gregarious coach. It would just really make sense to do more of those types of events to bring in some of that money, to say, hey, you know, we are family, this is UNLV, and kind of bring back, I know I'm a little nostalgic, but you know, what we did, what we did in the 90s, you know, so the 1990s. So, you know, I just think that it would be really, it would be worth looking into to get back into some of those donors that, I think, I think some of them missed that, that familial environment that UNLV has always, has always had.
Thank you for that question, Regent Goodman. Eric Harper, for the record. We actually do have a couple of things coming up that will be at the torch at Allegiant Stadium, and that I think will be beneficial to us. It was for the Wyoming game a year ago. The important part to remember at Allegiant Stadium, every time we ask for something, there's a cost, and we try to make sure that we are balancing the expense with the revenue that we can, we can, we can gain from that. And in some cases, we try to, we maximize that, and in some cases, we, it's only a minimal exposure. But the cultivation and the stewardship of our donors is a consistently ongoing deal. President Whitfield and I were just with a seven-figure donor over this past week to get them in tune to possibly giving us another seven or eight-figure gift. That we are, we are still trying and finding newer ways to engage donors because of the complexities of what donors do these days. Some are more restricted, some are more, or some are unrestricted, but we continue, and if you have some additional ideas, I would definitely take, take, take those. But we're going to continue to do the stewardship and the cultivation to make sure our donors feel the love of the Rebel family. And Coach Odom has open practice, so that gives an opportunity as well. And the ancillary dollars from those types of events and those types of things, we will start to see the benefits of those, of that labor.
And Chair, if I could, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV, to Regent Goodman, we've been doing exactly what you're suggesting. Actually, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, one of the funny things is, is that if you noticed, the torch is not on during our games. That is, if you get into the middle of it, it's very fascinating to see how that relationship actually, it's an incredible venue, but there are certain restrictions to it, and as AD Harper said, there are costs to it. We have that bottom bowl, which holds about 25,000.
24,700.
24,700, 25,700. And there's actually a cost to open up the next level up. And so there are costs with that. But just as you're saying, actually, later in our time today, Ricky McCurry is going to talk, and I think he's going to talk mostly about the foundation, but the alumni events that now go on before the games are growing and growing and growing. And I think that it speaks to your point of that, we really needed to try to find more ways to engage our fan base, and with that comes people that give, you know, eight-figure gifts as well as smaller gifts. And so it's trying to make that community that you're talking about, we are trying to focus on, I think, just your point. Thank you for that.
And add just, Eric Harper, for the record, just another piece of that, we are multimedia rights partner, Learfield, we work with them to try and get those types of events sponsored, so which in turn, any revenues we come in are clear revenues, and whether it's, I don't want to call out the sponsors' names, but if the sponsor's paying for the full expense of it, then we could just have a clear revenue. And sometimes, you know, people budget their marketing dollars in a given year, and we try to get them, whether it's 5,000, 10,000, 15,000, and then we can go free and clear on the revenues.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Regent Ariscotta again, and then Regent DelCarlo.
This is just a quick question regards to Sam Boyd Stadium and the $500,000 that was being spent just to maintain the upkeep of it over the past few years. Was that in the athletic report, or is that, where is that listed?
Eric Harper, for the record, that is separate, but I'll have Casey Wyman step to the podium.
Thank you.
For the record, Casey Wyman, VP of UNLV CFO. So that 500,000 is carved out of our deferred maintenance because Sam Boyd is on our real property, so we get an allocation based on that. It's distributed across NG, and so we take that allocation then to support that infrastructure right now.
And one more question, a follow-up question, please. Is that, was this the last year of that payment now that the property has been repositioned over to Clark County?
For the record, Casey Wyman, again, so the transfer hasn't happened yet. We brought it forward as an information item last meeting to ensure that we had the pulse of the regions, and we're bringing that back forward for decision in December. That also needs to pass the Clark County Board for their approval. So we will continue to have that on our books until the transfer is complete, and then we relinquish that real property over to Clark County for them to then take on their ledger.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll just follow up with this Super Bowl question. I was able to dig that up for Regent Brown again, for the record, Casey Wyman. So at the macro level, the Super Bowl generated about $80,000 for UNLV. That's parsed across a lot of different things, though, and so $25,000 access to use the fields. There were some paid internships through the Super Bowl that supported the school, and then there were some other ticketing and security aspects that they paid for that came back in. So roughly 80,000, but I'll provide you a transparent detail of what that is. It's approximate, so 78,000, 79,000.
About that. For clarification on the 80,000, that's not 80,000 real, that's not like money in the door, that's in-kind cash and everything?
It's a combination. So the $25,000 fee to use the field is cash, but then there's also the paid internship, so it's on a reimbursable basis at that end.
Cool. I would, at some point, I would like to know the breakdown.
Understood.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Regent DelCarlo?
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. And Regent Brown, you kind of teed me up, because I'm looking for breakdowns. You can hear me? Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to see a complete budget at a future meeting, line by line by line by line, so we know what you're all talking about. I think that's a pretty big deficit. I don't think I've heard when you plan to be whole. I'd like to know what your projections are for that. And in that, the different scenarios depending on what monies you get when, because we're not really sure what we're going to be getting from the Mountain West. And I'd also like to see a complete breakdown of what the cost is to use the Allegiant Stadium. I knew when we voted for this on the board, when we went from Sam Boyd Stadium that had a very low cost to this magnificent facility, it would be a more significant cost, but what is that cost? And what has that done to your budget? And this is the first time I've heard in a meeting that if you use another part of the stadium, then it's an additional cost. So I think the board needs to know all that, too. So I'm just looking for a lot more detail and a lot more, so we know where the costs and the controls are going to be going forward. And I fully support having this not just be at the BFF meeting, because I'm the Chair of ARSA, and I couldn't be in your meeting because they're at the same time, but our fiduciary responsibility, our budgets and policy, and we're not doing our job if we're not keeping our eye on these budgets. So I think this should come forward at every quarterly meeting until you're whole, and then we'll have a big party to celebrate you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from regions? Thank you for your presentation today, and next we will move on to UNR. President Sandoval.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board of Regents. For the record, Brian Sandoval, President of the University of Nevada Reno. Here with me is the Vice President Administration and Chief Financial Officer, Andrew Klinger, as well as our Athletic Director, Stephanie Remp. I'm going to do, with your permission, Madam Chair, just a quick walk through the sheets that we've provided you all with regard to capital projects that are in deficit. And then when we get to the real deep details, I'd like to turn it over to VP Klinger, and then with regard to the philanthropy associated with the athletic projects, I have Athletic Director Remp. So with your permission, I'd like to proceed in that way.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start at the top, and these are in your materials, these spreadsheets that were prepared by VP Klinger. But some of these should come as no surprise to you all. The first one is for the South Campus Parking Garage, and essentially that is for the bridge that goes across Ninth Street from the parking garage that connects it to campus. Obviously, that was an essential piece of this project, and the funding plan is to pay for the cost of that bridge over time with parking fees and parking revenue. Next is, and you'll see a series of these, but the construct chilled water and data connection to the Ninth Street Pedestrian Bridge. That is the very same bridge that I just mentioned, and that is the connection that is necessary to connect to the Business Building. So again, something that's absolutely necessary and will be reimbursed, as it says in the funding plan, with capital improvement fees. So we'll move on, and I'll move some of these, through some of these faster than others. And you've heard us talk about, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the Board. You know, we do have an old campus. We are celebrating our 150th anniversary in a little more than a week, and things get old, and they break down, and they need to be replaced. And so this first is the construct main chiller plant at the, for utilities. Next, after that, is we had to replace a sewer line and data lines and water lines toward the middle of our campus, the Thompson-Fransen Corridor, if you're familiar with it. So that all had to be dug up and redone. Construct redundant cooling system and electrical power for the capacity at the Matheson IGT Knowledge Center. The next is something that I think is important to all of us, and particularly on our campuses, upgrading the campus security camera system. So way back in '22, we made an institutional commitment to upgrade those security systems on our campus. Next is for the repair of a line at the Wigan Fitness Center. And again, in the middle of winter, we had a foot of snow on the water, on the ground, and in one spot, it was all melted. And we were all curious, how could that be? And it was because the warm water pipe was leaking. And as we dug, literally dug into it, you know, it just was a much bigger problem than we anticipated, and it went from a $200,000, $200,000 fix to an over a million dollar fix. These are things that we can't control. Moving on, the student-centric projects, and again, those are all self-explanatory, really hard to read unless you have readers, but in any event, as you go through all of those, you will see that those are some pretty fundamental fixes. Moving on, next to the demolish houses in the Gateway District, that goes back to 2019. And again, this is something perhaps, you know, new for me and new for members of the Board, but this was something that was approved long ago and anticipated to remove those, those homes to prepare for the introduction of the new parking garage. There's the empty lot right now next to the parking garage, and then the Business Building. The next one, radium to keep decontamination, and again, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Next, and, you know, I'll keep moving through these, and we can come back to this, but beginning the planning to construct a university fieldhouse, both for our students and for athletics, as you know and can appreciate. The wildfires over the past five years have increased dramatically in northern Nevada, and there will be weeks that will go by where both our students and our athletic teams are unable to practice outside because of, it is unsafe because of the smoke during the winter. It obviously gets down into below freezing and such, and we have our student club teams that are playing their games against other, other teams in 30-degree weather. It would be much better for them to be able to do that inside as well as our athletic teams. Literally, I've seen our coaches clearing snow from the soccer field, from the football field, from the practice field, so that their athletes can then have the opportunity to practice in 20-degree weather. So moving on, design and repair of the ADA seating at Mackey Stadium, again, an absolutely necessary and fundamental thing that had needed to be done. The sky boxes, that may sound like a luxury, but if you had walked through them, most, if not all of them, had not been updated since they were first built. And there's just some basic things like carpet and paint that need to be done in order to make them attractive for, for donors and season ticket holders to be able to, to want to invest in those. The pre-design of the Nevada State Health Lab, and again, you all are familiar with this project, but it is a project that is 100% funded by the state, $75 million. It should break ground in a few weeks, actually, but we're confident, at least for this expense, that it's going to be reimbursed through the state. Again, just some real basic things here. The renovate facilities, maintenance services building, these are just things that have to be done over time. This is, the next one is an interesting one, Madam Chair, is the pre-design for a new Life Sciences Building. And, you know, again, we are grateful that you ranked that number three on our, on the capital improvement list, but you will see that the date on that is 2018. And as we stated in our presentation to you all and to the Public Works Board, this will be the fourth session that we are moving, that we are presenting this project, and it is now almost double the cost for the very same building. So the next, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the Board, these are a list of athletic projects. And for the uninformed, you know, it may, again, seem like these are luxuries, but I will tell you, upon my arrival at campus, at least for our women's athletics, we were the subject of a Title IX investigation because of the condition of our women's student-athlete locker rooms. We literally had softball, members of our softball team and tennis team changing in their cars. their cars. We had a swim team that was changing in the same locker room that the public was changing in, and they didn't have theirs. The other teams that may have had a locker room, these were locker rooms that were 20-plus years old. For the women student-athletes, in terms of nutrition, some of the teams were maybe getting a protein shake once or twice a week versus some of the other male teams that were getting significantly more. You know, the turf, some of the turf, at least at our softball, softball complex, were our softball teams that had not been replaced, and it was well past its useful life. And frankly, there were, I've seen little league fields that were in better condition than that. In the dugout for our softball team, they didn't even have a working toilet, and that was something, and you'll see that that needed to be corrected. For the replacing the turf at Mackey Stadium, again, it was well beyond its state, and it was getting to the point where it was unsafe for our soccer team and our football team. And in fact, you know, there were some issues with infections for our athletes because of the condition of that field. I could go on and on. Madam Chair and members of the Board, and you will see, and Stephanie Remp can help with this, some of these frankly are not, are unfunded in with regard to not having donors to, but at the same time, I feel like it, you know, it's a, it's an institutional imperative to at least provide our student, particularly our women student-athletes, with comparable facilities to the male student-athletes. I mean, if you will see, and there was some discussion with this conference re-alignment, our athletic department is one of the least funded in the Mountain West Conference. And, you know, we, we have, you all have seen, we have made a budget request, and that, for one reason or another, since 2008, UNLV has received $2.5 million more per year from the state legislature for its athletic department, and that's great. I mean, we would just like to be equalized with regard to that. But if you add that up, since 2008, it's over $30 million, and those, that's money that we truly could have used to invest. So in any event, I think, Madam Chair, that pretty much completes a 10,000 overview of this, this facility sheet. And if there are other questions, I'm very happy to answer them. If there are more specific question answer, to be answered, I would respectfully ask if VB Klinger could respond to those. And again, with regard to the philanthropy, would turn it over to Athletic Director Remp because she has specific answers with regard to that. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to present on this matter, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, President Sandoval. I'm going to turn it to Regent Brown.
Thank you. Regent Brown, for the record. President Sandoval, I actually want to talk about two projects on our supplemental information. We'll start with the capital project for the South Campus Parking Chilled Water and Data Connection. I understand that we're going to move for capital improvement funds, that'll come to the Board, but I was wondering if the 27.5 debt amount could, can we break that down at the top of, so Board of Regents material, page seven, the top two rows reference this, but the numbers, I'm having a hard time, so I guess I need a lifeline from CFO Klinger. I'm having a hard time just finding where the 27 million, 27.5 million comes from these lines, so if you wouldn't mind explaining it, that would be appreciative.
Yeah. Madam Chair, thank you, and to you through, through you, to Regent Brown, and you'll ask for the lifeline, and I'll ask to phone a friend. And so I will turn it over to VP Klinger.
Thank you, President Sandoval, Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs, member of the Regents, for the record, Andrew Klinger, Vice President Administration and Finance at the University of Nevada Reno. To Regent Brown, so Regent Brown, the sheet is subtitled and ties back to the report that was presented at the last BFF meeting. So the top two projects there that are listed, so the South Campus Parking Garage, as well as the chilled water and data line, so those two projects together are almost $3.6 million. There's a subtotal there right below them. The next section of projects that have the title HEC/SHC and Capital Improvement Fee Funded Projects, if you go to page eight in the middle of the page, you will see that those projects total $14.2 million, a subtotal of just that group. And then finally, on the last page, page nine of your handout, the projects that are under athletics that the President spoke about, those projects total almost $9.8 million. And so those sections added together comes up to the $27.5 million.
Unfortunately, I think I'm going, Regent Brown, for the record, unfortunately, I think I'm going to have to take your word for it, because there was a lot of, lot of sections, I can't do that mental math, I'm pretty good, but yeah, I was just, I was comparing from the supplemental information, which is the reference from BFF in September, page three, with what you were saying. So I'll take a look at it, and thank you for just showing me where to look. And then my second question is actually, if we're looking at the BFF material that was sent to us, section one, which is the operating program accounts, the second to the last bullet point, which is just for clarification mostly, it's talking about the ASUN Wolf Shop, and it says that this amount has been held over, well, actually, my question, so it says that it'll be, the deficit will be paid down by the revenues received in fiscal year 2425. So my question is, is this amount of $200,000 held over from 2020 when Barnes &amp; Noble took over? Or, so is this like the current amount, or is this like the total amount, and it's been consistently being paid down since 2020?
For the record, Andrew Klinger.
Can I just interrupt for just a moment? This, the ASUN bookstore isn't part of the agenda item for this particular meeting, so I'm not sure if we should, we should go into that necessarily.
I will take it offline, Regent Brown, for the record, I'll take it offline. It was just part of the supplemental information, and I read that, too, so I'll, I'll call you.
Thank you. Any other questions on what we have here today? Nope, thank you. I appreciate you looking, comparing those, and apologies for interrupting, but got it, stay on the agenda. Are there any other questions or comments from Regents regarding UNR's fiscal exception report for this meeting? Seeing none, I want to thank you, President Sandoval, for presenting this report, and I hear generally that it's very important for all of the Board to continue to be updated on fiscal exceptions from all of our institutions, and that perhaps this should be brought back to the Board as a whole instead of just, just to BFF. So we will definitely take that back and, going forward, make sure that the whole Board is aware of that. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to item number three, campus safety for UNLV. And for this, I will have Chancellor Charlton introduce.
Good morning, for the record, Patty Charlton, Chancellor of Nevada System and Higher Education. So this agenda item is brought forward today to enable President Whitfield and Vice President of Business Affairs and Chief Financial Officer Casey Wyman to provide an update to the Board on some of the approaches and investments and initiatives that they have undertaken to address safety improvements across the campus. This is an ongoing effort, which they have provided significant contributions, not only through ongoing operating funds, but also as a part of their strategy that was presented to the Investment Committee last week on proceeds from the operating pool distribution. So wanted to acknowledge the President and the Vice President, and give them an opportunity to share this information with the Board. President Whitfield.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Board. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our ongoing efforts to enhance campus safety. Joining us today is, in addition to who the Chancellor just mentioned, is also Arnold Vasquez, Interim Chief UPD of Southern Command, and, as was mentioned, Casey Wyman, UNLV's CFO and Vice President. So since the December 6 campus incident, UNLV has taken significant steps to strengthen our campus safety and security. We have allocated $2.3 million towards key safety projects identified through a comprehensive report by the UNLV Campus Safety and Security Committee and input from key stakeholders. The first project to highlight is the campus lighting project. After the 2023 Safety and Lighting Walk, which we try to do every year, we identified key areas for improvement, including student residence halls, the Paul McDermott Physical Education and Athletic Quad, and the Barrett Museum. We have allocated $950,000 for those upgrades and are assessing additional areas for the next phase. Detailed maps and materials outlining the proposed areas are included in your Board materials. We're also updating and expanding campus emergency phones. We're doing this with over 143 currently installed, including three new units on the Shadow Lane campus. An additional $275,000 has been allocated for three new emergency phone towers. To increase emergency communication resources, more than 300 phones are also being upgraded and wall-mounted in classrooms. To enhance classroom security, $500,000 has been allocated to install automatic lock buttons in 400 classrooms, allowing instructors to secure the room from the inside if necessary. We're also expanding the video surveillance capabilities of the campus. Since December 6, we have added five new cameras to Beam Hall as a pilot project to understand how they can best be used and most efficiently executed. The plan to add, there is a plan to add 50 new cameras across campus. For specific locations, please refer to the map included in your Board materials. An additional $250,000 has been allocated to install a video analysis system with license plate recognition software. This allocation will include license plate detection on all vehicle entrances to the UNLV main campus and Shadow Lane campuses and the parking garage entrances. The equipment provides a rapid and automated means of threat detection, for example, stolen vehicles, wanted persons, and et cetera, improving police services' response to critical incidences by providing real-time data on vehicle movement. As part of the Chancellor's ad hoc Public Safety Committee recommendations, we're implementing knock boxes across all our campus buildings. Just to remind you, a Knox, Knox box is a small box, a small box safe that's usually mounted on the wall that securely stores master keys, and it allows emergency responders quick and safe access to buildings during emergencies. Lastly, UPD Southern Command, in partnership with UNLV HR, has launched a series of safety training courses through Rebel Learn. They are, they are also allocating, collaborating with OIT to enhance the General Crime Prevention and Safety Training Program with more employee-specific content and developing new videos on active assault response. It also includes conflict prevention and de-escalation. UNLV and the UPD Southern Command submitted a legislative request of $38 million in funding enhancements for the 2026 and 2027 biennial session. Of the 38 million requested, 7.3 is ongoing for increased personnel. These initiatives reflect our ongoing commitment to creating a safe and secure environment for everyone at UNLV, while also aligning with recommendations outlined in the Chancellor's ad hoc Public Safety Report. For instance, the committee's recommendation number four on locking mechanisms and number five on Knox boxes are already being implemented at UNLV. Additionally, I'm pleased to announce that, starting today, October 1, UNLV Human Resources is launching a campaign for faculty and staff to update their emergency contact information and workday, aligning with recommendation number eight for annual updates of emergency contacts. With that, thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions or discussions that you might have on these important updates.
Thank you, President Whitfield. Since this item came forward at the request of Regent Brooks, Goodman, Brager, and Ariscotta, I'll open the floor to them first. Regent Brooks?
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that, and thank you, President Whitfield, for being here today and talking about some of the safety and security measures that are improving and taking place on the campus. What I'm interested in having conversation about is really, well, I guess where I want to begin is to ask you to help me understand the administration's view of developments and incidences on campus over the past year. To begin with, can you tell us about incidences that your administration may have documented or investigated that occurred on, on campus that would be related to anti-Semitism, and what responses were followed?
Thank you for the question, Regent Brooks. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Let me ask Interim Director Vasquez to join me, to see if you have those data. We may have to come back and report those to you, because part of them are under the, what's it, Cleary Report, the Cleary Report, and then there's some others that don't fit exactly into that that we've been keeping track of, but do you have those, those information in front of you?
Thank you, Arnold Vasquez, Interim Director for University Police, for the record. Thank you, President Whitfield. Regent Brooks, thank you for the question. At this time, I don't have the specific data related to that. I can research that and get back to the Board. As far as I'm, as far as I know, we have had one incident, and I'm not sure if it was for this, for this year or for the previous year, but I'll have to look into that on the UNLV campus, and that would have been reported through the Cleary Report. Regent Brooks, for the record, so you're, appreciate that you're here. You're, you're letting me know that there was one incident that occurred on the campus over the course of the last year that would be related to anti-Semitism? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand what you're providing. Okay. So what I'll need to do is I'll need to do some research to confirm that. As far as I'm, the incident that I'm referencing would have been the incident that occurred on campus at a lecture hall. And through the course of that, it was a First Amendment right issue. I don't know that it was, the specifics were related to anti-Semitism in that particular case, but I'll have to do some research and get back to you. Thank you, I appreciate that. And so the incident that you're talking about is the Israeli professor who was providing a lecture that had to do with more astrophysics than anything else, and that, that lecture was disrupted by, by student activists, and then the lecture ended, and I was still unsure whether that lecture ended because the lecturer decided that it would be best to end that, or if, at that time, UPD decided that that would be the best thing. It seems like, from the lecturer's perspective, that he was asked to cut the lecture short, and then he was escorted to his vehicle to make sure that he would be safe in terms of getting off the campus. Is that the, is that the incident that you're alluding to? Yes, that's correct. So in that particular incident, University Police, when we contacted the parties at the, at the lecture, the decision to end or to close that particular lecture was not at the request of University Police. We evaluated the options, we shared those with the host for that particular lecture, and that was a decision that was made at that level. So once that was, that decision moved forward, we then facilitated closing that particular lecture, and then were asked and fulfilled the request to escort the professor to his vehicle.
vehicle.
Thank you. President Whitfield, I just have a couple of follow-up questions. In 2022, the board adopted the IRA definition of anti-Semitism, and then in one of our quarterly meetings a few months ago, we revised a sentence in that. That narrowly passed. It was a 7-6 vote, but nonetheless, the policy passed. What I'm interested in understanding is if you can tell me about any steps the administration has taken to, to understand and utilize that definition.
For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you for the question, Regent Brooks. So one of the, I would say it's the main step that we've taken, but there's a couple of different steps. One of the main steps is to create, I know the acronym, but I can't remember all the pieces of it. It's called BERT. It's a biased reporting system. One of the things that I think was raised during that conversation over our board report during the summertime was that, what I drew from the public comment from other things going on was that there was a disconnect between incidents that were happening or be reported to be happening and actually us getting reports of them, that people saying, were saying that things were happening, but we weren't seeing the actual reports as the director reports. We've got that, that one. And I think from seeing the, the public response that there was others going on, but there was a gap in between the two. And so over the summertime, we worked and figured out a way to use some internal mechanisms to enhance our ability to have someplace where students could report incidents happening, both students and faculty reporting incidents happening. And with this system, what we can do is then be able to, to have another source of, of recording those reports if and when they happen. That's, that's, I think I've shared that with the board, but I can share that again if you'd like to see that. It's using a system called Maxient that is actually used in other things, but we wanted to make it much more prominent that those types of, let's call them biased reports to make them very, very generalized, because it's not for any specific group. It's actually for when reports of discrimination in particular are happening, that we have someplace where students can actually go and report them. And so we have that piece of it. One of the other things that we've done is to try to facilitate our campus community and coming together, particularly around Jewish issues. So there's a Jewish task force that is made up of both faculty, students, and community members. They've had, I think, one meeting so far, getting very excited about not only thinking about taking a look at some of the policies that we may have as a university, but also thinking about events that can be educational events to be able to help folks understand it, Jewish history, Jewish culture. We do this with other things, and I think it's in part because we, we are such a diverse campus. As you well know, we're a minority-serving, Hispanic-serving, and Apezi institution, and so this is yet another step in trying to be as inclusive as we can of other cultures. But it's more than just numbers. It's more than just saying that, that folks are there. We want to provide some educational opportunities. And so that group is going to be, I think, for me, it's going to be a direct source of guidance and information for other things that we should be doing on campus, and also we're going to have some, they're planning some other activities to happen on campus. And we can bring those forward to the board at some point in time in the future, both, I think what will happen before maybe the next board meeting happens, as well as those that are planned out in the future.
Yeah, Regent Brooks, for the record, so the question really had to do more with the understanding and utilization of the IRA definition itself, to be able to identify when things are happening on campus that may or may not be anti-Semitic. In terms of the reporting structure, I can tell you, it would be my, my opinion that there are some shortcomings in terms of how things are being done regarding students and their ability to identify where they're supposed to go to, to report an incident, and then what that follow-up looks like. And so there's a pretty wide gap between an incident occurring and then a student being able to report that incident so that the administration knows exactly what's going on, because certainly there have been incidences on the campus where, where that, that gap, especially over the course of the last year, has, has demonstrated itself. The, you know, one of the things that kept popping up over and over again on the campus was the, the rallies in which protesters were chanting "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free." And I'm just wondering if that, if, if the administration considers that slogan that was being used throughout the last year, if that slogan is anti-Semitic?
Well, let me go back to your first point. That BERT system that I mentioned is actually doing exactly what you're, you're mentioning about the distance between incidents happening on campus and making sure that students have a place where they can actually report those incidents happening. Again, I can, I, I shared it with the idea committed, and I think our intention was to share it with the entire board, but I'm not sure that that went out. We'll double-check with that. Yeah, we'll double-check with that. To your second point about that particular statement and, and that chant that gets made, I think under that IRA definition that was adopted, that's something that's going to be included under that, and that will then be reflected in the ability to do biased reporting.
Madam Chair, Regent Brooks, I'm just going to jump in here just briefly and just to remind everybody that we are agendized for campus safety generally, and while I believe certain aspects of the anti-definition of anti-Semitism and other groups are, does relate to campus safety generally, I think we just need to remind ourselves that the focus is on campus safety, so, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Council. And I'll, I'll try to articulate this in a manner then that is hopefully identified pretty quickly as something that would be really regarding campus safety, because certainly incidences that occurred last year, I think, would fall under that umbrella of, of safety on campus for, for all students, particularly during that time, as these protests were going on, the safety and security of, of Jewish students should, should certainly be somewhere accounted for. And so that's part of this, this conversation. And in terms of something that would, I think, easily identify safety for Jewish students on campus during these rallies, there was the, the call to, to, and the chant to globalize the Intifada, which I'd be interested in knowing if, if the administration would, would recognize that slogan as something that would be expanding a geographic scope of terrorist attacks against specifically Jews.
For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. I believe that over the course of time, we have been thinking more deeply. You have been leading a charge to try to help us to understand better about what some of the chants mean, as many other university campuses across the country have been struggling with of trying to figure out where that fine line is actually between free speech and actually hate speech. And, and it has changed over time. I think the actions that the board took in terms of the IHRA definition over the summertime has changed a bit of how we interpret some of those things happening. We haven't seen them recently, and while we can't go back and undo where we've come in terms of this process, the, the BERT system is, is one of our ways in which we're trying to make sure that when students do actually hear those types of chants and slogans of that, and if they are not feeling safe, that they have a place to actually be able to report them.
Excuse me, Chair, if I may. Jimmy Martinez, for the record. I just want to remind the board that this agenda item is specifically about campus safety improvements and investments in the public safety of students and, and faculty. So, you know, these questions may be relevant, but I think it's important to remember that the relevancy is going to be tied to the improvements or investments that the campus has made, such as the, the system President Whitfield was talking about.
Yeah, Regent Brooks, for the record, I greatly appreciate that. I, I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding where some of the questions that have to do with student safety, how that wouldn't be considered under the umbrella of an agenda item where we're talking about safety on campus. And so are you suggesting that questions that I pose regarding student safety be, be geared in a, in a, in a different manner or articulated differently so that there's a clear understanding that this is a umbrella of conversation that is taking, you know, the umbrella of student safety and safety on campus is really where we're, where we're at with this agenda item, and it's my understanding that the agenda item, even though was, was called for by several regents on the board, was written for this purpose, to be broad enough so that we can have dialogue about things that have been happening on the campus over the course of the last year.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, the agenda item is, is noticed that the discussion would be related to campus safety improvements and investments in the public safety of students, faculty, staff. So what I'm recommending is any, any such conversations, while could be entirely relevant, they be directed towards the, the investments and the, and the investments that the campus has made to address those types of concerns.
So one of the, Regent Brooks, for the record, I appreciate that. So obviously, one of the things that occurred on campus was, and, and, you know, we can continue to have conversation about this to make sure that it's framed in the right, in the right way, was the chanting for an Intifada. And, and that, to me, would directly correlate to student safety on campus. So I guess what I could ask is, President Whitfield, what does, what does the administration understand that, that term Intifada to mean?
I'm still trying to think about it.
Yeah, and I think just, again, to, just to jump in, I think we're all kind of speaking the same language here, just maybe a little bit differently. I, I think maybe if, Regent Brooks, if you couched your question in terms of what has the administration done insofar as investing in campus safety improvements when these type of incidents occur, I think that would be more in line with the, with the agenda item and what General Counsel Martinez was referring to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, so last year, there were chants for the call of Intifada on a campus, which we, which I would interpret as most people would, an uprising of, of violence. If, in fact, the administration viewed that in the same way, then I'd be interested in what type of improved safety mechanisms may exist, particularly under the guidance of, of IRA as we step into this new semester. And if the administration doesn't see that as something that would be under the umbrella of safety, then I, I guess, you know, you can let me know that as well in terms of where the administration may sit on that.
Well, in, in trying to, to stick with what General Counsel and, and Special Counsel is trying to suggest, in, in terms of focusing the conversation, I want to come back to the, the BERT piece of it. In terms of campus investment, we're going to have at least one person, probably two people, that's going to be added to this BERT system to be able to provide opportunities for students when they hear chants that they find threatening, that, that they have issues with, and that we put under the, the policies that the board has put out now on discrimination, that we would have, we have infrastructure now to be able to better address that, that issue.
Thank you, President Whitfield. I appreciate that, but it's, it, it sounds to me like what you said was, the call for Intifada, you know, you're, you're essentially taking a pass on in terms of where the administration may sit with that, and if it happens again, then there is a, a system, and I have to tell you, I'm unfamiliar with the system that you're talking about, that would, would allow students to report that something that is currently happening on a campus, calling for the lynching of Jews, they can report that as something that perhaps they feel unsafe about. It almost, it's, what I'm interested in understanding is, based on the amount of occurrences that happened last year, what are some of the preventative measures of something like that happening to begin with? And so I get that there is a, an improved reporting process that students can utilize, but if we're talking about as we move forward into the new semester and what improvement looks like, what, what, what does that look like then?
So what does the improved reporting look like, or?
So the improved reporting, I'm sure that the board will get a, a great presentation on it. It's just something that I'm not familiar with now. And what I'm really trying to get at is the heart of, of particularly of students who, during the course of the last year, didn't feel safe on campus, and there's just no getting around that. And so when there are chants that call for Intifada, which essentially, if we're taking a look at safety, and if you're calling for the lynching of Jews on campus, then what does the future look like to have measures in place to ensure that if there are a group of people calling for Intifada, or again, the lynching of Jews, that students will still feel safe on campus?
So for the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV, I think to your, to, to try to address your point, Regent Brooks, that's what's written into, to creating a system like the BERT system, is to say, to make sure that there isn't adjudication, adjudication system so, so that if people do actually have statements that are, are biased, are racist, are discriminatory, are threatening, that there is a process to actually process those cases. I think that we were following the, the lead that the board did over the summertime in, in taking up the, the IHRA definition and trying to take it one step further to say there really needs to be some more process, some more actual action that can actually happen. I, I think that it was, the board's, I don't want to overstate what the board's perspective was, but it was really saying that these things can't happen. We needed to tighten up the kind of languages, language that could be used, and so that was part of that system. That's the effort for that system, so that there will be a far clearer ability to be able to take statements when those, when those are made, both because of the board policy, but also then that we have a system that actually adjudicates those cases when those incidents, if those incidents happen.
I, I have to tell you, President Whitfield, as much as I appreciate you explaining this, this new reporting system over and over again in terms of questions that I pose and making that part of the answer to the question that I posed, it's not necessarily an answer to the question that I'm posing. And so if I just asked you, based on the amount of activity that occurred over the last year on campus, that was, that was groups of people getting together chanting for an Intifada, would, in terms of the way that you would look at this for reporting, reporting purposes, would your administration view those chants for Intifada as something that is, is a, not only anti-Semitic, but something that, that is calling for violence?
I would not put the, for the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV, I wouldn't put the onus necessarily on my administration, per se. This is us making sure that we're following the policy that's actually there. One of the things that, just to share with you, our struggles sometimes has been making sure that, as, as you've heard, when, as we talk about this issue, First Amendment rights is always brought up, and we have been trying to navigate between things that should not be, being allowed to be said if they are seen and interpreted as, as going beyond free speech, and making sure that we, we, we step in and, and either stop those things and, and actually try to hold the folks that are doing it accountable. I think that that has matured over time. I think part of what you're bringing up is where we've been in the past, and I don't think we're at the same place in the future. I think that, again, through the actions of the board, we have redefined what some of those statements are and, and where they sit, and then the actions that can be taken when they're, when they're discussed. I will say that this is a, an issue that was, as I meet with presidents across the country, universities across the country, that are trying to figure out the, the kind of language that we're defining now as, as truly hate speech and that can't be used. While it's not fully agreed upon what can and can't be used, we are making sure that we follow the instruction, I think, of our legal counsel to make sure that we actually try to, if we can, err on the side of more safety and, and, and rights for our students to feel safe on our campuses. But again, bringing back the, the point of our free speech, some, I will just tell you that I struggle with it sometimes because we, we need to make sure that we allow free speech, but we cannot allow hate speech. And we continue to be able to try to redefine what some of those lines are. I think you're trying to raise one in particular, around one particular chant. I think under the, the policies that we follow from, instruction from the board now would take that, and that would be one of these incidents that we would think is a bias incident and that we would act on appropriately.
Thank you, President Whitfield. So then, just, just so that I understand, based on what you've said, and obviously with the use of the IRA definition, that was passed to be able to provide administrators on all campuses a tool to be able to identify what may or may not be anti-Semitism, and there's nothing there's nothing regarding the, the First Amendment or, you know, prohibiting First Amendment speech in that working definition of anti-Semitism. Am, am I understanding now, based on policy that's been acted, when you take a look at this, or your administration takes a look at this, that chance of globalizing the intifada or just calling for an intifada, are you suggesting now that, that seems like that might, may fall under more of hate speech rather than protected First Amendment speech?
And i, if I may interrupt, Jimmy Martinez, for the record again, I think we need to be clear to stay on the agenda item for the investments and, and improvements for campus safety. We're getting kind of into a First Amendment and an interpretation conversation, and I think that's always def, that's, that's always difficult to do in, in the best circumstances, but I think we're, we're getting a little outside the, the specifics of this agenda item.
Thank you, Council Martinez. Regent Brooks, for the record, so then, let me, let me ask it a different way, with considering the things that you had said, the adoption of, of IRA and taking a look at things differently should occurrences occur. When we talk about the advancements of safety measures, can you provide us with the distinction between what a rally of, of individuals who are on campus calling for, you know, the globalization of an intifada or calling for intifada? If that were to occur next week, where you're starting to see a mass of people come together for a protest, what would be the distinction in terms of the advancement of safety, security measures, and the recognized use of the IRA definition? What would be a distinction and what it looked like last year in compared to what that would look like today?
I'm, for the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNOV, I'm, I'm still concerned as I look at General Counsel that...
Yeah, I think, this Chris Nielsen for the record, just to echo what General Counsel Martinez just spoke, I think it ultimately has to, the question and the answer has to ultimately come back to campus safety, a, and underneath that, you know, what, what investments and what improvements you have made. So if I could summarize Regent Brooks' question, I believe that was part of his question, if I'm not mistaken, right now, is what, what, what types of investments or improvements have you made from last year to, to this current school year that would address certain incidents that could occur in the future?
And I think framing it with, with, with that lens, I come back to the, the BERT process that we have. We have invested money in terms of making sure that there are people to be able to process these cases, so that any people, anyone who's found guilty of violating our protections that we have under NCHI policy would then have a way to be able to adjudicate those cases and to move them forward. It's, it's something that, that arguably, even being as diverse a campus we had, we didn't have as strong, and that's something that we have invested in, that we formulated and designed the summertime, and I've made sure that, that we have people that can actually adjudicate those cases so that we can take care of those incidents.
President Whitfield, I appreciate that, but it sounds to me like the distinction between something happening last year with all of the tools available to you now, in your administration now, including the reformatting of the IRA definition specifically for use for all campuses, it, it sounds like nothing would be different other than there is a reporting process that will be used so that when students are walking by a group of people who are calling for an intifada or chanting "From the River to the Sea," those things would still continue, it's just that students will have a new way of, of reporting it. Is that, I, I'm just, I'm just asking just for clarification, because I was truly hoping that based on the advancement and change to the IRA definition for the use of administrators on all of our campuses, and things that we would recognize in terms of being blatantly anti-Semitic, and considering the demographic that those slogans are derived for, that those particular students, Jewish students who are on campus, would feel a, a, would feel unsafe, uncomfortable, extraordinarily concerned as things like, like that, those specific protests that are calling for the lynching of Jews, that they, they would feel in a way that their safety is being jeopardized. So again, I feel like we're just, we're, we're moving around in a lot of circles because I'm trying to understand what is the advancement now versus what occurred last year? And when I, when I pose the question, it seems to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the administration stance on this is the only advancement or new thing for security implementation would be a new reporting process?
For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNOV, I think I'd take a different perspective on that, and I, you had, you have to excuse me, I'm a psychologist, and so I think about behavior. So for those incidences, regardless of, of when they've happened, because I think just because we look back and we're coming up to the anniversary of October 7th, anti-Semitism happened on campuses before then. But to be able to stop any type of discrimination, if there is not a means to be able to hold people who discriminate accountable, there's no way to stop it. And so while I can't say that that's going to completely end anti-Semitism on our campuses, it's something that I personally do not agree with. I think that it's something that we have to figure out a way to try to stop. You know, and first is the reduction, first is the identity, is the ability to be able to make sure that we hold people who discriminate accountable. And so that's one of the central pieces of that particular reporting system. But I think as well, as I've reported, it's not an investment necessarily, well, it's an investment in terms of people, of making sure that we have a Jewish task force that's going to be able to be, provide education, because the environment that you're talking about, the environment that we're talking about here gets better through education. It, it gets better through accountability, and I think those are the two steps in which we've taken so far to be able to change where we've been in the past.
Thank you, President Whitfield. Can you, can you then just let me know in terms of education, what, what types of education have been provided for either administrators or, or others that would support what you just said in, in a way of moving things forward? And something else to consider is it, it, I think that there's a lot of focus on almost like the, the infrastructure of how something's getting done, and not really an emphasis on things that have happened on campus over the course of the last year and where that places students in regards to what they perceive to be their level of safety as they're, as they're walking on campus. But since you brought up the education piece, I'm, I'm interested in understanding what, what education has been provided through UNOV to help sort out some of these incidences where, where clearly I would say antisemitic tropes are being heard and chanted on campus?
There have been, I, I think there have been growing and developing educational programs. Actually, I would cite that we supported an opportunity for you to be able to bring an educational program onto our campus last fall. And there have been, I, I think, leading through our faculty, I think, who are very, very close to the situation, they have been meeting as a group, and I think under some faculty leadership, creating this task force, which was supported by, by my administration, is going to make it so that this fall, we're really leading into having a much more thoughtful, in-depth opportunities for people to be engaged in education. You know, one of the, the things I, I want to say is leadership in higher education is that you don't try to get ahead of your faculty. And we have some folks that have been very, very passionate, have been guiding us, and we've been meeting with them constantly. I have a Chief Diversity Officer by the name of Jose Mendez, and he has been meeting with our faculty to design and to think about actually what we could do educationally, really through the springtime and, and even through the summertime. I say even through the summertime because for faculty, a lot of times their appointments are nine-month appointments, and so the summertime is something where their engagement, I really want to thank them because they're not really being supported for that. That's what they're coming out and doing relative to, to their interest and passion for this. And so wanting to make sure that we didn't just make something that was going to be out there and not be effective, we have really tried to support and follow their leadership. And so they have been supporting things. I can bring all of that back, I couldn't tell you everything that has been planned through the work of the task force, I can tell you that that was just something that we wanted to create and was designed and, and carried out and established this summertime. But will, there's, there's, there's going to be a couple of, of meetings, events that are going to happen, speakers that are going to be here, and I can bring some of that information back to you with more details.
Yeah, I appreciate that, President Whitfield.
Regent Brooks, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to open the floor up to others, especially those who, who have also signed on to this agenda item, so I'd like to move it on to Regent Goodman now.
Perfect.
Thank you. With October 7th looming, what are your plans to make sure that the campus stays safe, you know, a year anniversary of, of last year? Do you have any plans to make sure that we have increased security on campus for all students?
Thank you, Regent Goodman. Arnold Vazquez, for the record. Yes, we actually do, we do coordinate and collaborate with our local law enforcement partners. To the previous point, we do collaborate regularly and have met regularly with the Free Freedom of Expression Response Team that President Whitfield has alluded to. We do that as a way to stay and keep our finger on the pulse on what's happening throughout campus and the different registered student organizations, but also to just bring different entities to the table to try and address potential threats that might come to campus. For your, for your specific question, my staff has been completely trained and been trained again recently to go over field force operations when it comes to if something was to rise to the level of civil unrest, so we are prepared in that fashion. We are also actually today have been engaged in a series of webinars for our command staff to be able to respond to that, and we plan to have these things roll out as not only October 7th comes forward, but also toward the election this year. So those are the things that we have in place. We have also, as I mentioned, coordinated with those local law enforcement agencies to have that coordinated effort in response to anything that might come into play. In terms of staff in general, we do have additional staffing throughout, at least beginning the week of October 7th. And moving forward, we have evaluated on a daily basis for officers as well as community service officers, and as you have seen, some of our security, armed security units on, on campus.
Do you, do you not see, I mean, perhaps actually having a plan to have just more officers? I, I understand the assessment, but you know, just for that day, I mean, just now, Iran shot, you know, missiles into, into Israel, this isn't going away, and I think it's going to be extremely heightened on October 7th, and I think it's vital that, I, I think it sends a message if our campus security has a presence and is seen on campus in a, in a larger way, so that, that people understand that, of course, freedom of speech is allowed and respected. At the same time, we will not tolerate any violence, and we will not tolerate any kind of action that is going to disrupt our, our students, our classes, and campus activity.
Yes, understood. Yes, for that particular event and leading up to, I said, like the election, we do have plans to have additional staff for those events. Now, that might change. We might have to add additional staff, but as I mentioned, we've already pre-planned and worked with local law enforcement partners if in the event we need to quickly assemble additional resources. But yes, we will have an added visible presence. And I think, as you mentioned that, one thing came to mind would be to also message that out to campus as well, that we will be out in, in that area.
And if I could add, I think the, the last point that Director Vazquez has mentioned is something that we really started in the summertime and we continue to do now, which is to make sure that for student groups, that they actually ask for police services to be there. I think that one of the things that's difficult in trying to, to manage and, and deal with some of these situations is response. We're a very large campus, and so, you know, I worry about every second, if, if an incident happens, every second that a police officer may not be at that particular place. And so as the events are happening, one of the things that we're encouraging our students to do is to say, you should make sure that, you know, Student Affairs knows, you should make sure that if you have any thoughts or any concerns, that you ask UPD to be there, and they've always been extremely responsive to making sure that they have people there so that they can respond as quickly as possible to be, and, and, and I would say, their response has been incredible, but I think even, it's something that you're mentioning, which is, is the physical presence is a deterrent itself. That's in part why we invested, coming back to the investment piece, the investment in the Yellow Jackets, is that it allows us to have more of a security presence on, about, and around campus, and hoping that that is an additional deterrent for things that might actually happen, that we would not want to have happen.
If I could add one thing, Arnold Vazquez, for the record, yes, you know, all of this is collaborative, and we work with all of our law enforcement partners, but that particularly also includes our Northern Command for University Police. In fact, we have recently connected on a few different issues that we have been evaluating and assessing since probably about two to three weeks ago. So we've been continually keeping our, our finger on the pulse as things emerge and change, not only regionally, but nationally and also worldwide. So we are in those discussions quite frequently, and you know, it is a fine line, exactly how many officers, how much law enforcement do we want to really have out there being visible and present? That's something that we have to find that sweet spot and just try and coordinate with all the information we have at hand, but also, you know, what is going to be the best for the campus community?
Thank you for that. And, and you know that sweet spot best, and obviously, we don't want to have anything where it looks like there's some kind of overextension of law enforcement. However, I think we should really, as Northern and Southern Command, make sure that all of, and all of our institutions, those places where they gather, UNOV, it's the amphitheater, in those areas, we should just make sure you know what that number is, but we should have that number at all campuses so that, so that students feel safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and to, once again, bring it back to our point about increased investment safety, that's part of the requests that we have going on at the Miami, and I know that that, that's a little bit late, it's going to happen in the springtime, but that's, part of that $7.3 million is, is really for more personnel. Director Vazquez can speak to this much more eloquently than I can, but there is a bit of a, a challenge in getting more people into the, the police force and police services. I think while we have a good ability to be able to train folks and do it, it's actually getting people who are interested in it. I don't want to speak too much for them, but one of the different ways in which we've tried to actually try to recruit more people, because we do have some open slots already, and we want to increase the number, but is people like Director Vazquez, who had an incredible illustrious career in, let's call it the private sector or for the public sector, and to bring them to university camps, he's an example of that? That's one of the additional ways that we're trying to increase that recruitment, because it has been difficult in recruiting people into our Public Safety Department.
The one thing I have to add to that, Arnold Vazquez, for the record, is, in fact, today, we actually just hired a new threat assessment, an emergency management coordinator. He comes with close to 30 years of law enforcement experience from Los, Los Angeles Police Department. He actually started two days, so I'm very happy to announce that. He will be, be a big part of what happens in the background as we talk about assessments, very extensive knowledge in that particular area for threat assessment investigations and emergency management preparedness. We also are extending a second offer to another tenured law enforcement and fire candidate who will start hopefully here before the end of the month. The sooner we can get him in, the better, but he is from Bakersfield, California, did an extensive career in law enforcement there, investigations, fire, and also emergency preparedness as well. So this is an example of actually boosting up our staff to actually focus on some of these things and bring subject matter experts to help guide our deployment for anything that might either be planned or unplanned events on campus.
Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regardless of the cultural, religious, or political event, how would leadership respond to ensure campus safety once the distinction of hate speech is identified compared to the First Amendment? the First Amendment? How would the campus respond? Would it discontinue the event? Would it remove individuals? What would the response be on campus?
Jimmy Martinez for the record, I just want to clarify, you know, one, the same thing that the agenda item here is related to improvements and investments by the campus, and also, number two, that hate speech is protected under the First Amendment.
Let me redirect the question. How would the, how would the, excuse me, how would the campus respond to ensure safety on the campus in order to maintain the secured environment for those attending a campus event in regards to faculty, students, staff, or participants to ensure the safety is being provided regardless what sort of speech or action is being conducted?
So Arnold Vazquez for the record, thank you, Regent Ariscotta. So as best as I can answer that question is, it depends. It really does. And in this profession, we have to balance all of those things that are taking place on campus, but our primary focus is to maintain peace and order and allow people to go ahead and peacefully assemble and peacefully express their First Amendment or exercise their First Amendment rights. Now, where the line is drawn in the sand on certain issues, that is not quite clear, and that's why I say it depends. So in terms of a strategic response or a quote unquote tactical response, that is all going to be dependent upon the facts known at the time.
So then, security or UPD or who am I, would remove disruptive individuals, is that correct?
Arnold Vazquez for the record, it's uncertain. Disruption to an ongoing event or a classroom study or something to that effect, yes, that would be something where we would address that particular individual or group of individuals, ask for compliance, and then evaluate the situation moving forward. Now, disruption on campus, as long as it's not threatening to anyone in particular or there's an immediate or a imminent threat of violence or the ability to act on that, we wouldn't be able to necessarily act in that regard. So again, it's not clear cut. We would have to evaluate all the facts as they present themselves, and as we know in these types of situations, they're ever evolving. So we can't really say that we would respond specifically one way to each incident.
If individuals are on campus, obviously, I do not have an affiliation with campus, but are there to be disruptors, would they be confronted and removed, is that correct?
Well, UNLV in particular, all our campuses are open campuses. And the issue here and the challenge is to be able to identify and know for a fact whether or not those folks or individuals are students or are allowed to be on campus. Do they have a lawful reason to be there? Do they have business that they need to hold on campus? That is the other issue, that's the challenge. We don't always have the ability to identify that, and that makes it difficult for us to handle that particular issue, but we will, as I mentioned, identify when it crosses that line of an imminent threat of violence or a threat to public safety.
On an individual basis, or do you do that per campus demonstration?
On an individual basis?
Let me rephrase. Yeah, let me redirect.
Okay.
When it is presented to the campus that an event is going to be taking place, do at that time, is the evaluation conducted to ensure campus safety, or do you all have able to get a greater pulse on the event where you can see it's going to be a hot button issue?
Yes. So the answer is yes to both. So on planned events, yes, we actually, we start that investigation or threat assessment immediately, as quickly as we possibly can. On unplanned events, those are evolving and they're quickly evolving, so the same process does happen, it's just at an expedited effort, but we do typically err on the side of caution and deploy likely more folks or at least make those calls for assistance more than we actually need, and then we're able to scale it back or back it off, dependent upon the situation.
Kind of those flash events in which you just alluded to are often conducted or, let me rephrase this, or arranged online where they can just state, hey, let's all meet on A campus, B campus, C campus, D campus, and let's all event, let's all conduct our protest, our voice, have our voices heard at each campus. And often those are, those flash events are being undertaken by individuals who are not affiliated or related to the campus. As you previously alluded to, it is an open campus. So at that time, when you obviously notice that individuals are not part of the campus, is that when you can confront those individuals and assess why they're on campus?
Arnold Vazquez for the record, to answer that question, we would be extremely hard-pressed to make that confrontation. And the reason why I say that is because we would have to have absolute factual information that the person that we are going to prevent from allowing themselves to peacefully assemble on a public space, an open campus, and to express their First Amendment rights, that they have no business being there, we would be very hard pressed to make that confrontation. Now, once they committed a crime or they cross that line, as I mentioned earlier, that would be a different situation in which we could confront, we could act on that piece of information and move forward. But this is a very, very complicated issue, and therefore, we have to take a very methodical and strategic approach to each individual situation. So I wish I could give the board a hard, fast rule to all of this, but unfortunately, I can't. I just have to rely on the experts within my department, my experience, and those that are supporting our department in terms of safety, not only on campus, but in the greater community, to make those decisions and coupled with administration and policy.
Just on the eye test itself, I mean, there's a fairly large discrepancy between peaceful protesters and individuals coming in to cause chaos, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We are past the time that has been allotted for this item, and I realize that this is a discussion that is very important. Student safety is top of mind and a top priority for all of us here, and I think we could have this discussion for several more hours, but in the spirit of moving this along and continuing the conversation, I'd like to end this conversation here and move on to the next item. But before I do that, I'd like to offer a five-minute or so break, and then we'll come back for item number four. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started with item number four, 42-acre property generally located on the northeast corner of Tropicana Avenue and Cobal Lane in Clark County, Nevada. For this item, I will first go to CFO Vitone.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. The next item on your agenda is an overview. We have University of Las Vegas President Keith Whitfield, Vice President for Business Affairs and Chief Financial Officer Casey Wyman, and Associate Vice President for Planning, Construction, and Real Estate David Fromer are here today to give an update on the 42-acre parcel owned by the board generally at the northeast corner of Tropicana and Cobal Lane. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Whitfield.
Thank you, CFO Vitone. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you, Chair, and Regents and colleagues for the opportunity to address with you today and to address you today and provide an update on the 42-acre property that we have. This land is not just a parcel of real estate. It's a transformative opportunity to shape the future of UNLV and its future within the border of the Las Vegas community. Joining me today in person is David Fromer, Associate Vice President for UNLV Planning and Construction, as well as, as you've seen before, Casey Wyman, UNLV CFO and Vice President. And they're going to be here to help me try to address some of the issues around this. So as you know, we've talked about this before. At your request, I'm here to provide an update on the strategic options for the 42 acres. This is following the feedback we received at the May 23, 2024 meeting. UNLV has pivoted our plans for the 42-acre site and is working to develop strategic options that align with both our long-term goals and your recommendations. Our focus is to ensure that the development of this property not only supports the university's objectives, but also responds to the insights provided by the board. Our goal is to implement a comprehensive plan that balances immediate opportunities with long-term potential. This includes exploring options for academic partnerships, sustainable revenue generation, and adaptive use of the property to meet the evolving needs of the university and the broader community. We're committed to ensuring that the development aligns with the UNLV top-tier priorities, which is our strategic plan, while providing flexibility for future growth and innovation. So let me share with you just a couple of options that we have formulated based on the discussions that we had at that previous meeting. Under option one, one alternative is to allocate and develop a portion of the property specifically for academic partnerships. This could include collaborations with other educational institutions, research entities, or technology companies, creating a hub of innovation that could support our research and academic initiative. Another option is using a portion of the land could be used to explore a long-term ground lease or partnerships aimed at revenue generation. This approach would seek to establish sustainable income streams that align with the university's top-tier strategic plan priorities, enhancing the property's value and utility while supporting UNLV's institutional priorities. A third option is that we could launch a new comprehensive RFP process for the entire property with a primary focus on maximizing revenue generation. The proceeds from this development would support key academic programs, enhance student services, and fund other campus improvements. The RFP would prioritize innovative and creative uses of the land that harmonize with the surrounding community and align with our long-term goals for campus planning. Another possible option, the number four, would be a phased development approach that offers flexibility and adaptability over time. This strategy would allow for initial short-term uses such as pop-up events, community activities, or temporary leasing, such as we did last year with F1. We actually had a lease with them for them to be able to use that property for parking of additional parking that they needed to be able to run the F1 event. This approach allows us to remain responsive to evolving market conditions and strategic needs, maintaining control over the properties and maintain control over the property's future development. These options or a combination of them not only have the potential to strengthen the university's financial stability, but also to create a vibrant space that encourages collaboration, innovation, and engagement. Building on the foundation of the 2017 Campus Master Plan, which I believe that you were provided, these opportunities will inform the next master plan update reflecting the evolving needs of the university. As we continue to engage with local partners and explore these opportunities, this new update will integrate the latest strategic goals and campus development priorities. We will look forward to presenting a more detailed plan in future board meetings as we continue to refine and explore these opportunities and options. With that, thank you for your time, and we welcome questions and discussions on this important topic.
Thank you, President Whitfield. I will, at this time, open it up to Regents who have any questions or discussion for President Whitfield. Regent Brown.
Thank you, Regent Brown for the record. So I appreciate you guys coming back with multiple options. I feel like this is good feedback or good information from our feedback. If I, this is information only, but I am partial to the partial development for academic partnership. I think that is what I had said in the previous meeting, that 42 acres landlocked that close to campus, you're never going to get that type of real estate again, and to be able to use that for our students and for an academic purpose would just be of such a value add. Two questions. It's hard to talk about the 42 acres without talking about the May meeting. I'm happy to hold off on talking that until we get to the Gateway project, but I, given that they are, have some connectivity here, would you give me some leeway to talk about it holistically, or should I wait until Gateway?
Yeah, thanks for asking, Regent Brown. I'd suggest sticking to the agenda items, so unfortunately, we kind of have to go topic by topic.
I can wait. Thank you, I appreciate you. On the supplemental material, reference Board of Regents 16, this is just my situational awareness, page 34. There's an image, and this is from the 2015, I think this is 2015 strategic plan, so for our reference, just to see. I am curious, do we own that land where those soccer fields are? This would be?
I don't have that in front of me. Our soccer fields, are you thinking about the ones over on, that are off of Harmon?
Unfortunately, the, and I can, I could pass out. I don't know what that road is, because the maps aren't labeled.
So just David Fromer for the record, Associate Vice President, Planning, Construction, and Real Estate at UNLV. Regent Brown, is this land embedded in the Maryland campus, or is this land embedded in the 42 acres? Some context would help me respond to your question.
I don't, I can show you supplemental information. Board of Regents 16, page 34. It's across some street from the Thomas &amp; Mack Center, so not the 42 acres, but like two parcels down, I guess, towards, I'm just more curious for looking at supplemental information. I'm just trying to understand the holistic approach. I think it's a parking lot now, it's when you come out of Thomas &amp; Mack, you cross through Paradise, I think. It's the two parking lots there. Does UNLV own that?
So, Regent Brown, David Fromer for the record, if I'm correct, and I can come up and take a look at that, I believe that may be land on the west side of University Center Drive that is owned by Clark County, where at that time, and I think this dates back to 2012, we were in discussions with Clark County and the Clark County Department of Aviation about the idea of potentially having some partnership on the land between the 42-acre site that UNLV was looking at and the Maryland campus. I can come up and look, but if I'm correct, then that land is not owned by UNLV at all.
Copy, that's helpful context. And I bring it up because I, you know, as we're kind of having these conversations of which option, it's nice to just look at Tropicana and the information, or the land holistically to the north of Tropicana, and if that could be one project eventually, but knowing now that we don't own that piece of land, that's just good situational awareness.
And Regent Brown, to respond to your question, David Fromer again, the image Regent Chair Carvalho shared with me, that is land owned by Clark County, managed by the Clark County Department of Aviation. That land is currently being planned by Clark County Public Works for a detention basin for flood control. There are flood control issues in this area, we do flood when we have major events, so I don't believe that that land is available at this point for UNLV use or some agreement. It's for infrastructure. So to your point about this kind of more comprehensive thinking, which I think is an important part of the strategy, and at least in the real estate realm, the feedback we get from the board today, as well as the very helpful feedback we got at May 23 meeting, you know, the use of the land, there's a bit of a spectrum to it, right? There's extremes where you say use it all for academic purposes, it may not have a revenue model other than what, how you fund academic, which tends to be through state capital or philanthropy. At the other end of the spectrum, which is really where we were at the May 23 meeting, and again, I think we're trying to find the right balance here, we were on a, pretty much a fully economic model where there was no intent for UNLV to have a footprint on that site. It was maximizing the amount of revenue we could generate from owning the asset. It was maximizing the amount of revenue we could generate from owning the asset. So, I think we're trying to understand and get feedback from the board about where along that spectrum should it be, and that will help us in moving forward in terms of next steps of how do we have a process for engagement for the development of that parcel? Is it all economic? Is it all academic? Is it somewhere in the middle, or some other purpose? So that's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just finish my remarks with just reiterating what I said, is that I am heavily interested in a academic partnership. If economic opportunities come because of that and support the academic partnership, that is a bonus for everyone, but that land is too invaluable to give up for anything other than academic growth. And I know in the May meeting, there was some illusion that Apex was availability, but that, we all know that even the utilities to that is 10-plus years out. So, it's nice to plan, it's important that we look at that, and we have a strategic opportunity, but this right now, to me, is the next phase, in my opinion, where UNLV should be looking for its academic growth. So, thank you.
Thank you. And may I, Chair, just offer a, and I, again, we're trying to learn more about the feedback and the direction from the board, so thank you, Regent Brown. I do think that, you know, there's direct and indirect benefits. Obviously, if you can get a academic partnership, there's a direct benefit to students and faculty in terms of extending academic programs. It could be clinical, it could be research, whatever may bear. There's also the notion of the economic benefits may not be direct in terms of a student engaged in a program or a faculty engaged in research, but it can provide resources to invest in academic capacity or research capacity. So it's a bit of a second-level consideration to reinvest in the other land. The other thing that I'll just share as information, I do believe the 42 acre parcel is a fairly unique piece of land in our inventory. We don't have any land that has a gaming designation in terms of zoning that is unique to that parcel. It's the only parcel we own near the hospitality corridor, Las Vegas Strip. So, again, I'm not advocating for any position, I'm just sharing what I believe is information for your consideration and feedback to say, this asset is unique, and it's quite a bit different in many ways than the land we own that is on the Maryland campus proper, or the Maryland Parkway corridor, that may have different backgrounds, different kind of positioning in terms of what value it could achieve. And again, that could apply to academic research or economic factors, but just something important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Goodman, and then Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you. For this meeting, I did ask to see the requests for proposals that were submitted. I also wanted to see the media plan for how the, how this was advertised, and I don't see any of that in the backup materials. I'm wondering if that was asked for by you?
Thank you, Regent Goodman. For the record, David Fromer, I was not aware of that request. There is no issue in sharing that information, it is all available, and certainly, if it wasn't, I apologize if it was something that you had requested that didn't make it down to me, but I have no issue if it's okay with the Chair and the Chancellor to share that information through the Regents, through an administrative...
Thank you.
Of course.
Off the top of your head, who did submit an RFP for the site?
I believe there were four respondents, maybe five. I can get that exact number. Two were advanced to shortlist. I can't remember the two that warrant, because I think the committee, I was not on that evaluation committee, but there was a committee appointed of real estate and economic development and other folks. The two who didn't make the cut, I don't believe, were seen as necessarily fully responsive in some way. The two that did make the shortlist were the Clark County Department of Aviation and G242.
I don't mean to be critical, but this is an item where we're supposed to be discussing what happened with the 42 acres, and in the future, I think it would be vital to be more prepared. You know, this item was supposed to discuss these things, air it out, so that we have that full transparency, so that people in this community understand that this was a very transparent process, that this is what happened, and I'm disappointed that we can't air this out for the public today. So, I'll leave it at that.
No, I appreciate your comment, Regent Goodman, and again, we can share that information. I can share some high-level information in terms of some of the basis of those materials. I don't oversee procurement, so that goes through a different department, that's a colleague of mine, but the RFP was advertised, about 1,850 email invitations were sent out through the procurement system called NGEM. The advertising was done through the Review Journal, which is a statutory requirement. I think it may not be the main way people get information anymore, so the procurement system, NGEM. There was also outreach directly via email to...
I appreciate this, and we talked about this last time in our meeting. I just, I wanted it in the supplemental, I wanted it in the supplemental materials. I wanted the public to be able to go on there and say, oh, here's the RFP, oh, here's this, oh, I guess I missed it. This is what I wanted to happen today with this item, because I think that that's what's happening, is we're not controlling the narrative, and you guys are doing things by the book, you're doing things correctly, and if we're doing things that way, we've got to, we've got to share it with the public. And so, we've already discussed it, I don't want you to have to go through it again, because you already shared with me everything that we did, not only on the phone, but in the last meeting, but just if you could get those materials, and if there's a way for us to post it, I think it would be advantageous for the community.
Understood, thank you, Regent Goodman.
Thank you.
Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. And kind of to add on to what my colleague, Regent Goodman, has said, you know, I feel like sometimes as a board, we get really piecemealed. I mean, I just learned something today that I didn't know, and yes, I was on the board in 2017 when you showed the master plan, but gosh, how many years ago was that? And I honestly don't appreciate getting that last night at the 11th hour. I mean, we got it really late, and I am really tired of getting the supplemental stuff very, very late. I mean, I was in the lithium summit all day yesterday, then I had a town hall meeting in my district, and it took me an hour to get there. So I didn't even get home until 9:30 last night, after I left my house at 7:30 in the morning. So, I don't appreciate that. But one of the things I just learned today, which I did not know, that that property across from Thomas and Mack is owned by the county. Now, being Italian, we take great pride in keeping our property. It's really important to us. Once you acquire it, you hold on to it. I think it's really an amazing asset to have 42 acres, but when we, the last meeting, and I didn't know this then, when we were approving the $5 million for the Sam Boyd Stadium, why didn't we know that that property was owned by the county? And it would have been, I believe, if I'm not looking at the map, but wouldn't that have been a contiguous piece to the 42 acres if we could have maybe made a deal with the county to get that property? Because I look at UNLV, it's a fabulous university, it's landlocked, though. I mean, you've got 32,900 students, record enrollment this semester, your school is going to do nothing but continue to grow, because Las Vegas is growing, Nevada is growing. You've got many wonderful programs going there. So, I completely agree with Regent Goodman, that you have to, you have to, I don't want to, and I hated that 99-year lease, that's ridiculous. None of us in this room, I said it before, are even going to be alive, but the 42 acres we've got to keep for academics. If we can do a public-private partnership, that is, that's the way to go, because we're not going to get these huge amounts of money from the legislature, it's just not there. So, I really think, this is just a discussion, it's just information only, but I think the board needs a lot more information, I mean, truly. And this is, you guys got this property, I don't know the whole background, but I think it was a, somebody did a really great deal in the past to allow UNLV to purchase this property, I believe it was for $50 million, and I'm hearing, nobody knew the, when we talked about this earlier, what a current appraisal was, but look where the property is. I mean, yeah, that's got to be worth, you've tripled your value, probably. So, this is such an important asset for your school, we have to get this right. So it's almost like we need to go back to the future, if I can say it that way, and just start all over again, completely rethink that, because I don't, I don't see this board coalescing on anything until we have a lot more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Del Carlo, appreciate that feedback, and, you know, I think generally we start with a position of if we own a piece of property, our first kind of position is to say, we want to hold it like it's an asset, and you sell it, you get a one-time payment, you hold it, and whether you use it for your own purposes, that returns value for eternity. I mean, universities are eternal entities. We do not see an end to our kind of existence and our ability to serve the community. And then we go from there, if it doesn't fit with a university strategic plan, whether it's academic, or research, or revenue generation. A little bit of background on that county parcel, the county used to own the Paradise Elementary School parcel, and we used to own seven acres of what we call the orange lot. That's the overflow parking area on the west side of University Center Drive. Sometimes people will park there for athletics events. We wound up trading the Paradise campus, because we were actively using it, this is many years ago, at least over 10 years ago, maybe 15, for the seven acres we owned on the west side of University Center Drive and north of Tropicana. So, we changed locations, in essence, it was an equal valuation of property at that time, but 2012, we did have an MOU with Clark County for that parcel on the west side, but ultimately, the county had an infrastructure need for the retention basin or detention basin, so the county had a legitimate use. And, you know, understandable and legitimate, right? The county's got a lot of issues they need to solve, traffic and flood control and all kinds of things, and they had a legitimate use that candidly, that detention basin will benefit UNLV ultimately, because it'll, you know, capture water before it flows over campus, it comes from the west to the east. But totally agree about the notion of a comprehensive view, and I think what we're trying to understand better in an informational conversation is, how can we get feedback from the board and the members of the board to help us position ourselves for a new effort for the 42 acres that the board feels confident and good about with a good process, and that UNLV, we agree, and it meets the strategic goals of what we're trying to achieve? And I think if we could walk out of here, it would certainly help us in positioning any future solicitation or action on the 42 acres, so that when we come back to you for discussion, or, you know, at the point where the board needs to take action, we're very well aligned, and I think what's been there is to get there.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Brager.
Thank you so much, Susan Brager, for the record. So, when I look at the map, and I have it on my phone, and you see your green area that says boundaries, RFP for doing one thing, and the other boundaries for the other. So would you be sending out, and I'm for, I get it, land is going to continue to get valuable here. I mean, an acre for building is about $1 million an acre right now. BLM holds on to it, they still have like 78, 80% of our state, which is unfortunate that we have to buy our own land to do anything, but that's how it works. So, to me, I agree, I'd like to see the RFPs. I'm used to looking at them from, you know, my last position in the county. Would you be looking at multiple RFPs when you have it divided the way you are? And I mean this for the whole board, so the green section being an RFP of one kind, the potential area for academic partnership, a different RFP, and then we have this little other green area for a potential, again. Would you do it as a whole parcel to see what someone wanted to do, or would you cut that up the way you're showing it on the map? That's one question, and then I do have something else.
Yeah, thank you, Regent Brager, David Fromer, for the record. I think we're very open to that in terms of whether we would, you know, one RFP is more of a master developer approach.
Right.
That's kind of more akin to what we've done at the Research Foundation, have done at the Research Park. We could do that, that's kind of a little bit more aligned with our prior process for a single developer. We could do multiple RFPs. I would say multiple RFPs, if you say we're going to reserve a piece of land for this purpose, revenue generation, a piece of land for that purpose, academic partnership. The challenge becomes, you don't know what people are going to propose, so to be very precise in the boundaries of the land, you know, maybe someone comes in with an academic partnership that takes 10 acres, and it's best located in an area that's visible but not the highest value part of the land, the highest traffic. You know, some other developer could say, I want to do a 30-acre medical teaching, you know, site or something. It's hard to predict what you're going to get, so I think you really need to go out and have a statement of purpose for the RFP to say, we're open to one master developer, you could propose that, we're open to, if you're looking to do something very specific that doesn't require the land. I think we'd probably look at an RFP that gives us some degree of flexibility to see what the market has to offer, because we can't predict that.
Well, understandably so, I understand that. I believe if there were one or multiple, that would be their choice and our choice as far as the academic piece of it. So, what I am going to bring up a little bit is the aviation part of that. And I do think that a project, and this is, I'm not, they would have to RFP like anybody else, it's just a comment, that having something that, an aviation school, or teaching people, I mean, I've been up in the tower, talk about a stressful job, where are those people coming from? So, something that has partnerships that benefit our students, and our economy, and the UNLV campus, of course, would be important. We have drones that are a whole brand-new, not brand-new, but more relevant to what's happening, you know, throughout society. So, I would be for multi-use with very high, and this is just me, and you'd bring back, one person cannot dictate what happens. We have a board that a motion would come in, or an agenda item from us as to how we would work, but I see that the potential for an academic use would be major important. We don't know, you know, we're going to be here four to 10 more years, or whatever it might be, not that we wouldn't continue to take an interest in our community, but I believe we have to be very futuristic and very careful, because land then will be gone, other than a couple other, you know, tiny parcels that we have, like across the street on Maryland Parkway, that right now can be used for setting up projects on Maryland Parkway, and gives us a little revenue, but not a lot. So, I think being careful, being transparent, especially to the board. I'm not used to being in the dark. The county was very, well, it was our projects in our area, so there's a little bit different there. You totally controlled your district, which was so much fun, instead of not knowing what's going on, to be quite honest. So, I think for UNLV to do a better job on finding out what the best and highest use is, and not just letting maybe all of it go, maybe it's not necessary right now, but holding on to it to a point in time where its economic value benefits us, and not just someone doing a project, but the value that it could give to UNLV for the future.
Thank you, Regent Brager, and I think all good points, and, you know, maximizing value, again, whether it's economic value or program value, you know, a few, again, it gets complicated, and everything is always complicated, right? Because I was just thinking about the idea of multiple developers, and you've got to deal with the master infrastructure, who provides utilities, who provides roads, how do you allocate that, they have to match up. So I think we do need to look at some of the ideas and the direction or information from the board to say, how can we align this to make it something that will also work for the development community and work for UNLV? I think planning new programs adds another layer to it, because, you know, traditionally, unless we're starting up a whole new college, which has its own process, right? That's a lot of board approvals, that's state funding and state legislative approvals for faculty. We don't have an aviation college, you know, would that be under our engineering school? How would you, you know, fund the faculty, run that as an operation? I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just want to add one thing. So, where you have on the one side, if it was, let's say it was a, not a gigantic hotel, but a hotel that was meant for hospitality students. I'm not certain where they go now or what they do. They could be all over the valley, but if they actually were everything there, and it was a learning thing, I could see a piece of it being that. But I do think we have to be very careful, and I'll say one more time, very futuristic, because... because once that land is gone, it's gone. It's kind of like the Howard Hughes Corporation that has, I mean, now Summerlin is just the whole west end of town and only into the conservation area, of course. But they totally plotted out, like, where do shopping centers go for the masses there? Where do, uh, different things go? Where do their schools bought? I had to fight for campuses up there when I was on the school board. You know, during my tenure, we did 140 campuses. So it was a lot of chaotic situations because of where the students go. So that's why this is so important, that I don't think it needs to be rushed, but I think that it needs to be very thoughtful. And I'll leave it at that because we've gone over on a number of things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Erskata.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Fromer, a couple of questions for you. So in March of 2015, the Board of Regents approved the negotiations. Is this property paid for at this time?
Thank you, Regent Erskata, David Fromer, for the record. The property still has financing outstanding. I don't have that exact amount, but I can certainly work with CFO Lyman to get that number. Yeah, the board approved negotiations in March, approved the purchase, I believe, in December. It was purchased by the foundation because of their ability to act nimbly and then transferred to UNLV. It was purchased for 50 million. A recent appraisal had it about 126 million. It's probably gone up from there. So Regent DelCarlo, to that point, uh, it has tripled in value to date. And, you know, again, land in that area does have a good amount of value. But it is not fully paid off. There is still debt against that property.
Right there, you did answer my next question with the current value. But it is accruing an annual debt of 3.1 million?
The debt was 50 million, and the buy-down of that debt, uh, both principal and interest is 3 million a year. I believe it's a 30-year term. So at this point, you know, I, I don't have the amortization schedule, but my very rough guess would be that since we're about nine years into the term, perhaps around 20% of the principal is paid down, very similar to a mortgage schedule.
So the University of Nevada Las Vegas has had this property, stagnant property, not growing, not, not bringing any revenue in, not benefiting students, just sitting there. Are there any signs to give notification to the public that this is UNLV property?
Thank you for the question, Regent Erskata. Uh, there are no signs on the property at this time in terms of advertising, you know, that it's UNLV property or that we'd be interested in takers. I think that's an idea we can certainly look at, particularly in conjunction with an RFP process. That may be another good way to get the word out. Related to its, uh, utility, uh, we have used it for a couple of kind of academic and partnership purposes. We had a, a cleanup with, uh, Clark County Commission, Commissioner Scow at that time. So it was more of a community engagement event, very nice. Uh, we've used it for The Boring Company, for a competition. Uh, we have had license agreements on that site for F1, as President Whitfield has noted, that had some revenue. Uh, we've used it also some years ago for staging area when, uh, a contractor was putting S, the escalators and the overhead walkways on the strip. So we do look for very short-term opportunities as permissible and as sensible to generate revenue. Um, I'd say that, uh, that total amount of revenue is probably in the, uh, low million, 2 million range over the life of the property. So I, it's not, it's, it's certainly not enough to pay off the land, but I think that's another opportunity for strategy, even with the time it would take to do an RFP and the time it would take to engage a developer and for them to actually get entitlements and permits. There's still that opportunity to engage in, in license agreements or short-term leases. Uh, there are needs for things like construction staging and parking for F1 that could happen at that site without long-term commitments.
And at two, within a five-mile radius from that property, how many other 42-acre properties are undeveloped?
Uh, thank you for the question, Regent Erskata. I, I don't think a great deal. I'd say a mile radius, almost none. Five miles, I think you start getting into some industrial land in the southwest part of the valley. But I would say we get a, we get approached, uh, you know, occasionally from projects on the strip where they need, uh, construction staging or laydown or parking for a major hospitality development. And they do come to us. Our, our rate, our market rate to lease is a little higher than those sites five miles away because it's close. But then again, with all the rules of, uh, uh, construction, particularly with labor, sometimes the proximity is very attractive, even if the rate is higher, because then you have less transit time for construction workers, which is a cost factor in development.
Well, the attraction is, is obvious compared to the, significantly primarily to the example of the, of the gentleman who are sitting behind you on your left when they came and the aviation individuals came and made that very nice public comment stating of their interest. I mean, you have interest there, something that possibly should be acted on. Although I do see the RFPs need to be going out, um, in relation to the four different options in which you all want to pursue. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to, uh, Regent Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Regent Brooks, for the record. I just wanted to, is more of a statement really than, than a question. And it's something that, um, you posed earlier in terms of what you said was, when Regent Goodenham was talking about, um, hoping to have more information today, when, uh, Regent DelCarlo was talking about getting information late yesterday, and then the expectation is, you know, board members are going to go through everything and, and be completely prepared, which, um, uh, we, we, we generally are, but that makes it difficult. And then you, you asked essentially, you know, what, what can we do to, you know, improve things a little bit as we move forward? And it, that was, that same question was posed to this board probably five months ago, right? And the answer hasn't changed. It's communication. It's being held accountable to the things that you want to be able to deliver to the board on a timely basis so that we have the information that we have to have to be able to sit in a meeting and have conversations and then vote on various specific items. Now, while these are information-only items today, it doesn't negate the fact that there, there is a lack of communication. And so the, my frustration, you know, is, let's not ask anymore, what can we do to improve? You, you have, the institution has the answers, you have the answers. Just execute it, communicate. It would be great to hear from, uh, President Whitfield on, on agenda items that are coming forward to the board so that board members have a very clear understanding of, of where the institutions sit and a direction that they would like to go in. It'll make things a lot easier as, as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question for you regarding, um, these parcels. Are there easements on them? I mean, uh, we, we hear that they are, they're very valuable. Obviously, the location is, is, seems prime. But are there any encumbrances or easements on them that would, would lower the value or restrict development in some ways?
Yes, thank you for the question, uh, Chair Carvalho, David Fromer, for the record. There, there are easements on the property. We have a title report, uh, that when we acquire the property, we do not, I don't believe we've, we've executed, uh, new easements. There is one coming up, which we'll be bringing to you. This dates to a board hearing, I want to say perhaps 2019, and a Clark County hearing where Clark County is going to be putting in Tompkins Road at the north end of the 42 acres to connect Oval to Paradise. And as a part of that, and as a part of the divergent diamond interchange project, the depressed roadway, there was an agreement with the chancellor at that time, Chancellor Riley, the county, UNLV, that UNLV would dedicate that land for Tompkins in consideration of the DDI. So we haven't put an action item, there was an information item, but that we'll be bringing out to you. That's probably the major new item that's occurred since we bought the land. Uh, the land does have a variety of easements. It used to be, uh, there was a mobile home park on that site. There was a, I think, a Motel 6 on that site, probably before, uh, I was even in Las Vegas. So there are a variety of easements, most of them utility-based for water power and telecommunications. I believe the county has a right to expand Tropicana, to widen it. So they do have some easement rights on the south side. So there are pre-existing and one to come. Uh, I would say that the appraisal took all of that into account. Most of the onsite easements for things like utilities ultimately, uh, will probably change. And that would come to the board because the easements that exist are legacy easements. And as a site gets developed and power is needed in a different location and a different manner and capacity, we would go to NV Energy and request their review of how they service it. And we'd have to come back and probably relinquish an old easement and then execute a new one for utilities, things like that.
Are there also height restrictions on any building on this, on, on these parcels?
You know, that's a great question, uh, Regent, uh, Chair Carvalho and David Fromer, for the record. And this has been a topic of conversation with, uh, the Clark County Department of Aviation, obviously. You know, they're our neighbor. They operate, you know, one of the top, I think, five busiest airports in the country. There are, this property falls under Clark County entitlement processes. So there are height restrictions related to Clark County zoning and comprehensive planning. On top of that, since this is so close to an airport, there's a study that needs to be done. We actually did this as consulting work as a part of the acquisition process called an FAA 7460 Part One study. It's a bit of a specialized study that talks about not only the, uh, Clark County zoning and comprehensive planning, height limitations. It also gets into studying the airspace operations. So we've done studies of that in the past, and those are dynamic as airport operations change. And I am not an expert in this area, far from it. But as those change and there are safety requirements that come with flying airplanes in and out over the site, because it does happen, that study generally has to be updated fairly regularly to take into account current operations and restrictions. I would say generally, and again, I have my airport colleagues still here, they may, uh, they may call me out of turn, but our prior studies using a specialty consultant for that generally said to the east side of the site, which is closest to the runway protection zone, so that's kind of closer to Paradise, the height restrictions are much greater because it's very close to the runway protection zone, which is kind of an area where if you're going to have an incident, I think the analysis is it's more likely to happen in that area. As you go to the west, the height becomes more permissible. And it kind of makes sense, it's getting further away from the airport flight path. It's also pretty close to MGM, which is already a pretty tall building. So there's already an obstruction there, as they would call it. So I can't give you exact numbers, but the prior study, which probably is no longer in effect, to the east, I think the limitation was in the 100-foot range. To the west, and again, this is air, at that, five years ago, probably closer to the 200 to 300-foot range in terms of height based on airport operations. But that has to be studied again. I don't know if I have my folks cringing behind me, but that was what our consultant said, uh, back in 2015-ish.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from, from Regents regarding this item? Yes, go ahead.
Regent Brown, for the record. I would just make a request that when we get supplemental information, that the maps have street names listed on them. I'm familiar with Tropicana. I grew up here, but even I had to zoom in, zoom out, find it on Google Maps. I actually printed maps and emailed them to my colleagues with the street names just for everyone's situational awareness. So it would just be helpful to have that.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. So, um, in closing this item, I'll just reiterate what's been said numerous times, that it's, it's extremely important to bring forward to the board anticipated plans for, for this, for these parcels and, um, and allow us to give you continuing feedback on, um, intended uses for it. So I appreciate your time today. And with that, um, we'll close out item number four. Before we go to item number five, there is lunch available for, for Regents and, and Presidents and Cabinet. So we'll take just about a 10-minute break to get, um, lunch, and then we'll move on to item number five. Thank you. A property for UNLV. For the introduction of this, I will go to Chief Financial Officer Chris Vatone.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho, Chris Vatone, uh, NCH Chief Financial Officer. Item number five on your agenda is also an information item. This is also an update from the University of Nevada Las Vegas, President Keith Whitfield, and, uh, Vice President, uh, Casey Wyman, and Associate Vice President Dave Fromer. This is, uh, this item is an update for you on, uh, the status and impacts of the Gateway Property, including the issuance of a formal written notice of default to ML 4700 LLC and other matters. And all of that, I'll hand it over to President Whitfield.
Thank you, C, thank you CFO, uh, Vatone. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Board, um, for requesting this update on the Gateway Property. The Gateway Property represents a significant strategic investment for UNLV, offering unique opportunities to further our mission and strengthen our presence in the community. Joining me today is Dave Fromer, who you heard from before, Associate VP for, uh, Planning and Construction for UNLV, and Casey Wyman, uh, CFO for our university. In 2023, UNLV acquired the Gateway, uh, the Gateway Property, located across from the Maryland campus, across from our, uh, School of Urban Studies. The property was identified as a strategic asset to support UNLV's efforts to enhance student success and foster community partnerships. Our goal, and still remains, to leverage its mixed-use potential as part of the revitalization of Maryland Parkway in our ongoing efforts to create and expand a vibrant, university-branded frontage and corridor that both strengthens our campus and the surrounding community. As part of the property acquisition in 2023, UNLV entered into a master lease agreement with the seller. However, on July 9th, UNLV issued a formal notice of default to the Master Lacy of the Gateway Property. Following this issue, UNLV, with the support of NCH, contracted real estate counsel, initiated legal proceedings to appoint a receiver for the property. I'm pleased to report that on August 15th, UNLV's petition for appointment of the new receiver was granted by Clark County, uh, County District Court. The receiver is now overseeing the property's operation and management and as we can transition the property to direct oversight by UNLV. We are collaborating closely with the receiver to gain a comprehensive understanding of the property's condition and operational requirements, a process that we anticipate will take several months. We are currently assessing the projected monthly net lease revenue under UNLV's management. Based on our assessment, we believe that the Master Lacy could not meet the revenue targets that they committed to. Without the Master Lacy in place, we anticipate a reduction in monthly revenue from the approximate 25, $250,000 we previously received. We will continue to utilize or to analyze the property's financial model to ensure that its sustainability and alignment fits within UNLV's strategic goals. We remain committed to managing this asset effectively and responsibly, and I welcome any questions or discussions as we move forward with this transition. And with this in mind, I open our floor for discussion.
Thank you, President Whitfield. I'll open it to any Regents. I see Regent Brown.
Thank you so much, uh, Regent Brown, for the record. I alluded to this earlier, but, um, Gateway conversation, um, has to be tied to the April 23rd agenda item for the 42 acres, given that the Master Lacy in the Gateway Property was the same, uh, company being, uh, proposed to us to lease a 99-year lease to the 42 acres. So I'm looking at your supplemental information. May 5th, they became delinquent, or the payment was due by the 5th. They had not paid it. The explanation was that they had some sub-leasee change. Okay, fine. But on May 14th is when they actually made the payment, but there was still a deduction of about $85,000. So I guess my question to you is, why was this happening May 5th through the 14th? And then you came to us on the 23rd without disclosing this information? And so my real question is, like, if you knew it was delinquent, why didn't you share it? And if you didn't know it was delinquent, why didn't you know?
For the record, Casey Wyman, CFO, UNLV. So I need to be very clear on this, is that while they have some connective tissues, those processes were independent and separate on purpose. So we have tried very hard to ensure that we keep all things not tied together for those and we look at them independently. And so on the initial part of the late payment in May, that is something that happens within the business operations, as we're all aware of, community leaders, and as we communicated the late payment, and then they came back with a plan, you know, there's grace given within that community to say, okay, we'll, we'll work with you to continue to do that. Obviously, we always ask, is there anything else that we need to be concerned about? There was nothing brought to our attention in a formal capacity at that time. And so therefore, we felt confident moving into our secondary conversation then concerning a different topic item, although that, again, that connective tissue was there, it wasn't something that we felt was relevant. And based on due diligence and repayment processes, that was not something that raised a red flag, because in the past across, I could probably give you very specific instances of people having late payments and then recovering, and then it's just, you know, timing issue. Our fiscal exception report is a great example of a lot, a lot of things are just processes and business processes, our, our timing are poor, therefore generates a negative at times. So it's the same thing for that type of business.
And I appreciate that answer, and I do understand that there are two separate, even offices within one institution. But I also think that another date that needs to be recognized is that May 23 is when you reported, you presented to us, July 9 is when the letter of default was issued. That's only 47 days. So it actually begs a bigger question of is accountability, are we making smart choices with the people that we decide, we attempt to get into a 99-year lease with? I want to get back to Gateway, but like, this is a bigger issue to me, because it does feel like a little sneaky, because we're, yes, different, different sides of the house. If somebody is not making, and they'd only been with us less than a year. So this is, there's not like there was years and years and years to go back on and they had some sub-lessee problem. So I actually, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement and just I'm disappointed that the numbers don't lie. It's 47 days between the presentation, we asked questions, and then they went into default. So what would have happened if we would have said yes?
Great question, ma'am. So again, Casey Wyman for the record. So one of the things I think that's important to talk about for that piece is the, how did we get to the point 47 days later where we did issue the default? And it's intent of the lessee to state that they were willing to go into that status, therefore we issued and then, so you know, if they have intentions to say, oh, well, we present a plan to get well, those types of things, then we can entertain the other conversation. However, that was not had at this time, and so they issued the desire to say, okay, you know, we would like to be able to break ties with the university, and so therefore we, it was an easy answer for us. So then therefore we can move relatively quickly. And then Counsel Wixson, which I believe is online, supported us through this process. So we were ensuring that he was informed, he coordinated on, on every document that we interacted between the, both councils and the company, to ensure that we were in compliance, and he made a recommendation to move forward as well.
Okay. I also have to expand it to look into the overarching financial impact of what this means for the university. You know, with the master lessee expecting to decrease around 80 to 150 indirect management model, the revenue projections actually extended the timeline for the internal loan on the property for 32 to 59 years. So I don't want bad decisions to future generations to have to pay for our mistakes. So how can we nip this in the bud now and get back on the trajectory that we had?
Yeah, great comment, ma'am. So Casey Wyman for the record. So because it was an internal loan, we used our assets. So the, the negative balance is at the account level, it's not at the bottom line level. So we use our investment income at UNLV to purchase the, the asset, and then we said, okay, well, we're going to make this right and we're going to do the internal accounting fluctuations on there. And so I don't want to get too far ahead, because it is still under receivership, and that's our initial preliminary understanding of how this asset's going to transfer. There are a lot of things to go into commercial and residential real estate from a financial plan. The margins are extremely thin to begin with. Occupancy rate has a significant factor on the repayment, as well as capital improvements associated with the commercial side, depending on what's in there and how long their, their leases for. So while I, I think that information we provided in the supplemental is just to say, this is the potential, if, if nothing changes, this is where we see it come out to play. However, once the receivership ends and we retain full control over the asset, we can then look to modify potentially the business operations, develop a new financial plan to, to repay that project account at a lower end, or at a quicker end. Obviously, we would require levels of transparency back to the board to ensure that we're in compliance and we're doing good. We're not going to take the asset and just turn it into something, you know, ridiculous. It's, there's people that live there, there's businesses that operate in there. We still want to honor those commitments, but then also look, where is it that, what failed previously? Is that something we do internally, organically, or is that something that we go back out to market and say, is there somebody else that can perform this action for us in the interest of UNLV?
And the last thing I'll say is I, Regent Brown for the record, I do appreciate what sounds like thoughtfulness. It's just, and we don't want to just lease it to anyone. We do want it to be a value add to our community. We keep going back to that, right? With the 42 acres, with Gateway, with every property that we have and every asset that we own, it has to be a value add to the institution's mission. But I will say that, you know, the quickness that we can move as an institution, as a system, to repaying back that balance as scheduled, because that money can be used for additional investments. We have a whole meeting today on how, you know, the budgets are misaligned across the board, right? And so I think that that's just something to consider and not just say, well, it's an internal loan, so, you know, we have time. I actually think we should treat it as if it is depreciating, and we're owing people money and, and try and get back on track. So thank you.
Thank you. Other Regents who have questions or comments regarding this item? I, I have a few for you. First, do you, do you know what the vacancy rate is, what it was when this, when the master lessee went into default? And what is it now?
Yes, thank you for the question, Chair Carvalho, David Fromer for the record. Right now, the vacancy rate of the residential is right around 8% to 10%. So we'd like to be at 100%, 97%. Most of the residential properties that are newer student housing in the area, things like the Degree and Echo, are generally in that 95% to 97%. The, the units at Gateway are a more premium price, so I think it's a smaller market. I don't know what the occupancy was prior, but I believe it was lower than the level we've worked with, with the receiver, who has retained the current management contracts, which I think is a sensible approach. And we've done everything we can to support the receiver in trying to get the occupancy as high as possible, particularly before the semester started, because being an academic institution, there's a calendar that drives it. It's not student housing, we don't operate it as student housing, it's market housing, but a lot of people who live in the area have some relationship to UNLV, and we recognize that. The commercial property, I believe, out of, there's 11 units, and I want to say there's either three or four vacancies, so we're working on filling those with the receiver. There is a commercial real estate entity who has, again, been preserved through this process. I believe that there's some tenants, one or two, that are paying rent, but if not, get started their operations. So it's financially performing for those two tenants, but they are not providing services, which is something you generally want to watch, because that's not sustainable for the long term, someone paying rent and not yet operating their business.
Just to clarify, that, did you say that the eight or nine percent is that vacancy or occupancy?
That's vacant. So let me state it another way. We, the property is approximately 90% to 92% occupied. Good clarification. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I want to make sure we're speaking the same language there. Also, can you speak more about why the, and I see that you say that the, the master lease obviously was not realistic after the fact, but was there any, did you see any kind of pro formas when they presented this, this agreement to you that, can you just speak about why, why that, that $250,000 now going down to $150,000 a month is, is now the reality of this project?
Thank you for the question, Chair Carvalho, David Fromer for the record. We did do an assessment of that during the negotiation phase of the master lease. And just to give a little more context to that, you know, the assets that were being acquired in Gateway, we already owned the garage, we owned it for this purchase, we owned the police headquarters. That was an agreement in 2016. So that's, we started working with, on the Gateway property around 2014, and we own Levels Two and Level Three. Those were lease purchase, approved by the Board back in 2020 or so, 19, thereabouts. So we acquired a commercial real estate asset and we acquired a residential real estate asset. So we went through the pro forma of what the current performance of that asset was to the current operator, the owner. And the understanding that was presented to us was there was an effort to reposition that asset to a higher revenue generating model. So a higher level of revenue was promised to us, which is favorable to us, right? But you have to be able to follow through. And my understanding was the repositioning of the property from a conventional, you know, this is more on the residential side, conventional residential asset to more of a premium revenue asset, did not materialize, and the revenue that was promised was not sustainable. The rent was paid on time for a year. And then at a point, the rent was not paid on time, and then soon after, in June, it went to a non-payment of rent. So I believe that the master lessee had a plan to repurpose the property to increase revenue, and they made us a promise, they entered into an agreement on this, that basis, which the Board approved. And ultimately, that did not materialize, and they could not achieve a higher level of payment to us than they were prior, that they were netting prior without taking a loss. That's my understanding.
I understand that. Thank you. So I'm, as you're, as you're talking about this, I'm thinking about the due diligence that, that UNLV would go through before they, they bought the property. So there's, I'm, I'm sure there was an appraisal done, that's, that's in Board policy, that's, that's important. So now, and I'm sorry if I'm getting into the weeds on this, but I just wonder if that appraisal was done with the income approach? And so the, was there a third party who, who kind of vetted this income stream? And can you speak to that?
Yeah, for the, David Fromer for the record, thank you for the question, Chair Carvalho. So the appraisal that we do on the property valuation is really done three ways. It's an income approach, it's a replacement value approach, and it's comparable approach. And you look at all three values and you see if they align, and they don't always align. And I'd have to go back and look at the details of the appraisal. From all of those values, the, the price we paid was actually slightly below the appraised value. So based on the income and the revenue, it was justified, the appraisal said, we believe it's worth this price. That was above what we paid. The cost for UNLV to build that asset and, you know, building public construction is more expensive than building private construction. So from a replacement cost value and then comparable project value, the appraisal and the valuation of the property all penciled out. So I don't think there's really the question about the appraisal of what the property is worth. What ultimately was the question was, the property value was based on that current income stream, that wasn't enhanced. So I believe on that basis, we paid the market value or a little bit below. The actual master lease, which relieved UNLV of managing the asset, which was not, you know, again, I think when we brought this to the Board in 2019 as an information item, you know, being that was a strategic acquisition, but our core business is not managing commercial real estate or residential real estate unaffiliated with student housing, our, the approach to buy it was to say, it may not be advisable for UNLV to get in that business directly, even if we want to own the asset strategically. So the master lease was above the net revenue that was on the current operations, and the master lessee offered a higher rate based on their expectation to reposition it. They ultimately were unable to achieve that higher level of revenue and likely were, you know, they may have been making less revenue than they were paying us, which isn't sustainable. So I believe, again, that's my understanding. I have not had a direct discussion about the basis of the default, that wouldn't be appropriate, but I believe it's the cash flow, that's really the question, not the property valuation.
So at this point, what's UNLV's plan moving forward for this property?
Yeah, thank you, Regent Chair Carvalho, David Fromer for the record. So we're in the receivership period. We are targeting, although it's not guaranteed, to exit receivership, ideally November 1. We've had a little bit of time to digest, we've gotten reports of operations, occupancy, you know, things that need to be dealt with, you know. It's a fairly new property, so the deferred maintenance was not a great backlog of anything. The intent is to transit, transition it to UNLV operations. We're still looking at the commercial, we do manage some commercial property, but we do have a commercial property management and leasing subcontractor, so we haven't really made a determination there yet, but we're looking at that. On the residential side, with it being 169 beds and 125 units, that again is not student housing. We have student housing agreements with UPA through a different agreement at the Degree and Legacy. It's very important that we keep this not university housing with respect to those agreements. That was worked through with Council and with our housing operations. So I think we're almost certain to retain a residential property manager and operator that will report to us in terms of the financial and the ability for the property to sustain itself, but we will not be directly involved in leasing to occupants. We need a very bright line there to not have an issue with our other campus housing agreements. So I think it's a, pretty much a certainty that we will retain a third-party residential manager for day-to-day leasing and operations.
Thank you. It looks like I have a question from Regent Del Carlo and then from Regent Brager.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. I, I know nothing really about commercial real estate and all this, but you just told us what the options kind of were going forward. I'm looking at this thinking, this is not part of our core mission, this is not a space we really should be in. Let's consider this a mistake, I think, and again, go back to the future and see. I think down the road, we need to look and see if we can't just sell it and just get it off our books. We don't need to be carrying the burden, we don't need to be worrying about leasing spaces. And if we just had the agreement where we have the police department and maybe just the residential, maybe we could work out some kind of deal, but I know there's all kinds of developers and, you know, property will increase in value over time. We know that. It is in a strategic location right across the street. So I, this is not an action item, but I would throw that out to see if we can't just relieve ourselves of the whole burden. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Del Carlo. David Fromer for the record, you know, that is one option, and it is something that could be done. In fact, we've kept the condominium structure in place for the property, so that if we ever wanted to sell the commercial and residential component, we, we would not sell the university occupied space, which is Levels Two and Three, where our School of Public Health and our graduate college are, nor police and the garage. But I, I think that is one option that could be considered to look at selling. I think that ties into the strategic purpose of, you know, does this property make sense to have an inventory for some long-term view, which is probably a conversation that, that needs to be had.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Regent Brager.
Thank you. When, when do the contracts that we have with our current providers for university housing, how long do those go?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question, Regent Goodman. David Fromer for the record. So the receiver is kind of a court appointed role. So that ends when the court releases it, which we have some influence in that.
No, I I'm talking about what we currently on campus, like our current housing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
I misunderstood the question. So the agreement we have, and this is not my area of oversight, so I may not be fully accurate. I'm going to say what I know. The agreement we have with the company UPA for the degree in the legacy, I believe that's a longer term ground lease. I want to say it was 40 or 45 year ground lease on that one. There are certain triggers for future development in that that the the degree, which is the new development, I believe, is fairly locked in on that. But then there's the two. There's an apartment complex called the Legacy to the west, which is called Future Phases in those agreements. I believe that there's I want to say it's either a 10 or a 15 year development right the developer has for that with certain targets of occupancy and debt service coverage. And if those aren't met, then that property comes back to UNLV and we can manage it directly. And there's also an exclusivity tied to that because getting financing for these projects, particularly when there's not a history of student housing, which there isn't much in Vegas, that also I believe ties into that 15 year or so timeframe.
I guess what I'm getting at is can you wrap in this the residential that's part of the gateway into something that is going to be student housing? Is there an opportunity for that where, you know, you have to be very careful and but is there a way to pull them in? So that, I mean, the proximity to the school is is obviously ideal. And I just didn't know if that is if that's an option.
Yeah, thank you for bringing forth kind of the the point of the remark. I appreciate that because it helps me refine mine. David Fromer for the record, that is a possibility and that has been a topic of discussion to say, you know, do you have an option to buy out the rights to the degree and then in source? Or do you go out and you solicit other student housing operators and developer who may buy out both assets and then operate them as a concession or a contract? So I think that is possible. Yes, thank you.
Susan Brager for the record. This was a little bit ways back when you were speaking with Chair Carvalho. When it was in the all default in the default situation, were the tenants paying money to someone and they just kept those from the university system?
David Fromer for the record, thank you for the question, Regent Brager. Between the period of the rent being paid and no issue and the receiver being appointed, there is about a two month period there, month and a half. In that instance, there was not rent paid. So rent was collected by tenants and it was not paid to the university, hence the default. That's when the receiver was appointed. And I might lean on Council Wixom on this, but as a part of that legal action, there was a judgment written that gives the university the right to collect that back rent. So it is it was not paid. There was a a court judgment.
I'm going to interject just for a second. I apologize for doing that. So the tenants were paying.
Correct.
But the money wasn't coming to where it needed to go. That's what I was trying to.
The master lessy was not paying us, but the tenants in the building were paying the master lessy.
Two months and yes, you can go back to it, but default makes it a difficult situation because sometimes you only get partial, you know, the payment. So thank you. I just was trying to clarify when you were saying that to the chair that I kind of lost that little piece of it. But I agree that if there's a way, you know, this to keep the student housing that are there are the ones. But it's a multi use situation with just anybody being there doesn't sound very safe to me when we're when we have our students somewhere separate. And I know they're adults, but still the responsibility of what we're doing with them being in a project that's not particularly ours or monitored by a is there a house person there? Or they're just on their own?
So thank you for that question, Regent Brager, David Fromer. It is operated like a any other apartment complex in the area. Probably the one advantage we have is our police headquarters are in the building. So if there's an incident, since we own the property, our police have jurisdiction over it because it's a university owned asset. We have our police in the building, which is a nice asset to have. Of course.
Next, I'll go to Regent Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Regent Brooks for the record. It it looks like you are the the face today of some of the things that are going on that that we have some contention with, right? And so I just want to reiterate that this is not necessarily directed to you personally as much as it is overall things that are are happening. And it was touched upon earlier just a little bit, but I'm having a hard time getting away from the fact that the 42 acres in Gateway, where essentially you're doing business with the same folks and that on the institution itself, the explanation of why something like this would happen is because you had two entities on the institution that weren't talking to one another. And so clearly, the board has an expectation of clear communication. If the institution's having a hard time with communication inside the institution itself, there there are some real issues here. The it it seems like and is our is the institution short on resources in terms of not recourse in terms of what it can do now that, you know, this is essentially in default and there was an appointed receiver for the property?
Thank you for that question, Regent Brooks. David Fromer for the record. So the lease, the the master lease was compliant through May or through the end of April, I should say. And then the issue of compliance is the $85,000 referenced in the board briefing paper, which it's a little bit of a complicated arrangement because the term of these sub leases with the commercial tenants is longer in some cases than our term with the master lessy. So in that instance, the master lessy can't pay for all of the TI tenant improvement allowances because they may be out in five years, but those TIs are good for 10 years. So we have a shared leasing model. So that $85,000, not to say it's not it's appropriate or not. There's some there's some need to make sure that that is documented. And if it's not right, we know exactly the amount. I think there probably is some middle ground of recovery there. And that's in the judgment, I believe. And then the other items that would need to be recovered are June rent and July rent. Those three items are the items that UNLV has not been paid. Starting August 1, the master lease is over and we get all the net revenue, which is not at the level of what the master lease was. But the only items in dispute are two months rent and the $85,000 of shared lease expense. Probably some portion of that is likely the question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know this is there's there's some history behind this in terms of the Gateway project itself. What I'm wondering is because we recognize that P3 projects are going to continue, but it it seems like there really has to be a lot more diligence that's being done with how these projects look and with information that comes before the board. Prior to the build out for Gateway, was there was UNLV utilizing data driven processes to take a look at what would commercial, you know, space look like here? What would residential space look like here? What what would garage space look like here in terms of usage and costs?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Regent Brooks. David Fromer for the record. We do have our finger on the pulse of market rates, probably a little more for commercials since we're not residential operators, but we do operate some commercial properties. Like we bought the Run and Rebel Plaza, for instance, as a strategic acquisition, which came with leases. So that's where Cuginos is and Chow Tai and, you know, Cheba Hut, things like that. So we do have our finger on the pulse of lease rates. And this market is not an easy market. This is not like where people, developers are flooding in, saying, I'm going to build an at risk speculative project. And there's a lot of product in this neighborhood that is a little bit on the older side. So you're not class A in all places. I would say so we do have a good finger on the pulse. I think some of it comes down to intent and, you know, intent can evolve. So when we first got into the Gateway P3, the initial intent was parking only. And then the developer would develop whatever they want on the front. We didn't know what that was. And the agreement was that he the developer would build a parking garage. We would own it, but we would have some agreement to let them use some of it to support their commercial project. They would overbuild it in essence. And then it turned into once the front part of it, which took about three years after the parking garage to kind of develop, was we were going to lease purchase two floors of it, that second and third floor. The police headquarters, shell space was part of the garage. And then it became more of a strategic purpose to say owning the asset. So I think in this instance, we went in with kind of one purpose. And over time, and you learn things over time or perspectives and initiatives and strategy changes over time, it became a little more involved than we had originally anticipated when entering into a P3 back in 2015. I think it was 14. The garage was done right before the presidential debate in 2016.
Thank you, Regent Brooks, again, for the record. I I appreciate that. You know, it was hit on just a little bit today by by a couple of regions. But I'm wondering, perhaps there could be some conversation about what what is the intention, right, of this space? Does UNLV need it? Is it is it something that becomes UNLV owned? And it's there are some resources that are maybe it's residential, maybe it's something else, but very specific to the institution? Or do you just take it as a loss and and get, you know, and get rid of it? And listen, there's I'm not suggesting that you come up with that answer right now as we're having this dialogue, but certainly there there are reasons to question what the institution has intentions for, right, with this with this space.
Yeah, thank you, Regent Brooks. Just to respond to the comment, I think, you know, there are probably a limited universe of things we could do. We could continue to operate it and pay ourselves back and try to maximize revenue to get closer to the original intent of the repayment period, which is going to be challenging because you have to find more revenue. You could sell it and hopefully sell it for enough. You would put it out and, you know, get an appraisal and someone would be willing to pay that appraisal because they want the asset and you could pay back your internal loan. Or the housing agreements, we have to see how that shakes out to Regent Goodman's point or question. But you could look at repurposing it more to university assets. But you still have to deal with the revenue and the internal loan issue anyway. That can't go away. You got to pay that debt back regardless of what you do. So I think those are kind of the big universe of what the possibilities are. There may be a few more, but those are the obvious ones to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other regions who have questions? I did want to go to Mr. Wixom, who is on on the line with us via Zoom.
Thank you. For the record, there was a question raised earlier. Michael Wixom, for the record, there was a question raised earlier about the stipulated judgment. And we have a confession of judgment from the tenant in the amount of $971,000.
Thank you for that added information. I I did want to mention one thing.
Chair Carvalho?
Yes, yes.
This is Chair Del Carlo. I don't know what Mr. Wixom's talking about. I've never heard that term confession of condition. What does that mean? Thank you.
Michael Wixom, for the record, if I may respond, the tenant acknowledged that they owed us that amount of rent. And and they they agreed to pay that.
Okay, appreciate the clarification.
Thank you for the question, Regent Del Carlo. I did want to mention that it it is part of that that campus master plan that that came before the board. And I know that at the time that the the board approved this sale, that was a a selling point to us, so to speak. So I I think with all of the information that was in front of us at the time, I think we we made the most informed decision. Obviously, things have happened that that weren't anticipated at the time. And so I hope that we can we can go forward with this as an asset and and hopefully come out of it as a win. But I did want to mention that if if the intention is to kind of have a master lessy relationship once again, if there is if there is a default, I I strongly encourage you to to act on it very quickly and let the let the board know as soon as as that happens. Because I think that there was, as I think Regent Brooks has said before, there there was a lag in communication on that. And it is difficult that while it it you make reference to the fact that the the firm that was involved with the master leasing of this was not exactly, you know, in in name or whatever, however, their their business is structured, maybe not the same as as who was who was awarded the RFP for the 42 acres. These things were happening at the same time and and it's it it doesn't make the board feel comfortable, obviously. So I I think it's important to consider all of that and to continue to to communicate with the board on on things, you know, properties and endeavors of the magnitude of both the Gateway project and the 42 acres. With that, we'll move on to item number six, fundraising endowments for UNLV. And I will have CFO Vatone introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Chris Vatone, NCC Financial Officer. Item six on your agenda, University of Nevada, Las Vegas. President Keith Whitfield, VP for Business Affairs and CFO Casey Wyman and Vice President Philanthropy and Alumni Engagement Ricky McCurry have a presentation for you on the university's philanthropic fundraising activity and 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 updates and and trends on and planning for the next comprehensive fundraising campaign. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Whitfield.
Thank you, CFO Vatone. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you for this opportunity for me to be able to introduce to you Ricky McCurry, who serves as the Vice President of the UNLV Foundation and Vice President for Philanthropy and Alumni Engagement. Ricky has been instrumental in advancing UNLV's fundraising efforts, consistently driving impactive impactful initiatives that support our university's mission. Today, Ricky will update us on our recent fundraising successes, including major gifts and ongoing growth of our endowment. He will also outline plans for a comprehensive campaign to support the university's long term financial goals. And with that, let me introduce to you Ricky McCurry.
Good afternoon, Ricky McCurry, Vice President for Philanthropy and Alumni Engagement and President of UNLV Foundation, for the record. Madam Chair, members of the board, we appreciate this opportunity to come before you and share with you some information regarding the fundraising program at UNLV. I have provided for you and we have the screen, the 10 year fundraising history from 2015, our fiscal year 2014, through fiscal year 2024. And we have provided this information, including gifts of service and recognition. And we split this out because it's important to note that while the IRS does not officially account service and recognition gifts, partial service or recognition gifts, it is important for us to acknowledge and recognize those individuals who provide those kinds of services and recognition for us. And you can see those are some very significant numbers. But over the course of the 10 years, if you look at what we've done, we've averaged about $66.2 million per year. And there are three years that sort of stand maybe contrary to that that average. And first is the 2017 year where you see $93.027 million. That was a year which we received a $25 million gift for the Kirk Accordion, but it wasn't a Kirk Accordion School of Medicine at the time, but for support of the School of Medicine. Also, in 2021, we were affected, as most universities were, if not all universities during COVID. And in 2024, obviously, we're affected by the tragedy that occurred on campus. With respect to the current year, we received a $9.5 million gift for scholarships and that's an endowment. A $4 million gift endowment for scholarships in our honors college. A million dollar gift to the support the newly developed Department of Ophthalmology. A $1 million gift to support the practice and a million dollar gift to support hospitality students. I'm also pleased to share that just last week, we welcomed nine new members into the Palladium Society, which recognizes our donors of cumulative contributions. which recognizes our donors of cumulative contributions totaling a million dollars or more. In addition to those nine new members, we also recognize a contributor who moved into the highest level of support, which is our Palladium Society, which is our Ruby Society within the Palladium Society. And that gift total requires twenty five million dollars and above. And so we were honored to welcome Billboard and the board family into the Ruby Society. Moving to slide two, I want to share some information about our endowment. The UNLV endowment continues to do well as a result of strong performances and new gifts added. The market value of endowment has increased eighty eight percent from two thousand fourteen fifteen to twenty three twenty four, from one hundred and eighty four million to three hundred and forty six million. We have an extremely talented investment committee at the Foundation Board. Committee is chaired by Randy Garcia, who is CEO of Investment Council Company. Randy was recently honored by Wall Street Journal and Barron's as one of the top one hundred independent financial advisors in the nation. And Randy sits as an advisor, I believe, on your investment committee. We are averaging twenty eight new endowments per year, with an impressive forty nine new endowments brought in last year. Over the past ten years, two hundred and eighty four total endowments have been created. Our minimum requirement to establish an endowment is thirty thousand dollars. And then lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about our upcoming comprehensive fundraising campaign. As part of the Foundation's strategic plan, we will conduct a comprehensive fundraising campaign. We have had a twelve-year drought since the last campaign for UNLV. This is highly, highly unusual for a university, and especially a tier one research university. Most universities have a campaign every three to five years. As part of our planning process for this campaign, we engaged an external consulting firm to conduct a capacity analysis to determine whether we were in a position to raise somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty million to a billion dollars. Now, the last campaign that was concluded in two thousand twelve was a campaign that ended up raising five hundred million dollars in gifts and pledges. The assessment was such that a campaign could be undertaken with that type of goal, seven hundred and fifty million to a billion, provided there was continued work to be done. And that work included establishing and building a pipeline of major gift donors, donors capable of making gifts of twenty five thousand dollars or above. To be successful in a seven hundred and fifty to a billion-dollar campaign, we need about eight hundred individuals to contribute gifts of twenty five thousand or above. When the firm looked at our data, they analyzed that we could, in fact, generate that type of money. And they believe that a campaign over a seven to ten-year period could be successful for at least seven hundred and fifty million and potentially a billion dollars. The comprehensive campaign will be made up of a confederation of smaller campaigns. For example, last October, we launched the Rebel Up Campaign, which is a one hundred and fifty million dollar campaign geared towards athletics. So when we talk about a seven hundred and fifty million to a billion-dollar campaign, the reason it's called a comprehensive campaign is because it will support every aspect of the institution. It will seek money for facilities. It will seek money for programs. It will seek money for people. Basically, there's only three things you can provide philanthropic support for: people, places, and programs. And that's what we will be seeking. We will also be seeking to grow the endowment, which will help with financial stability. Foundation Board Chair Tony Sanchez, who is Executive Vice President of NV Energy, and I look forward to presenting the Foundation's annual report to you at your December meeting. Before I conclude, I do want to make mention of some of the activities that we have been doing on the alumni and friends side. Because really, fundraising is an end product. You got to develop relationships. You got to have programs and things that people are interested in supporting. So as part of our efforts to try to expand our activity with our alumni, as well as reaching friends and others, we started what we have termed Rebels on the Road. And so instead of just waiting for alumni to come back to the university at homecoming, we are going out on the road to where our alumni are. And we're taking President Whitfield. And we're engaging with alumni in various ways. For example, the president and I will have dinner with a small group of potentially major prospects for this campaign and for the UNLV. And then we'll do a broad activity for alumni in the area. And we recently were in Washington, DC with that activity. We've been to San Diego, Phoenix, just to name a few places. And some of the regions have actually been present for some of these events. Regent Brown, Regent Perkins, and others have been at these events and can hopefully speak to them and their experiences with them. Also, something that we're going to be doing as well is that we realize that there are a number of people that are moving to Nevada. And we're trying to connect with people who are coming into the area. Because if we're going to have this group of eight hundred people who can provide major gifts to a campaign, we've got to grow the pipeline, as I mentioned earlier. And what better way to do that than to look at some of the new people that are coming to the area? So we're starting a program, and the first one will take place on October the sixteenth. But one of our Foundation Board members, who happens to live in Southern Highlands, is hosting an event for the residents of Southern Highlands, for the president and our dean of medical school to come and meet and greet those individuals and share the vision of the university and the medical school. We hope to replicate this activity at several other communities in Las Vegas, such as the Summit, Dragon Ridge, and others. So with that, Madam Chair, again, thank you very much for your time. And I'm happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you. First, I'm going to go to Regent Brown.
Thank you so much, Regent Brown, for the record. So a few months ago, I sat down with President Whitfield, and I had asked a couple of questions about the fundraising and strategic vision for the foundation. I was told to stick to workforce because that was an area I knew best. So forgive me if I ask a lot of questions today because I want to make sure I walk away with a good understanding. So I see that you pointed out the medical school gift in two thousand seventeen. Can you tell me when the engineering college gift came in?
Ricky McCurry, for the record, Regent Brown, which specific engineering?
They would have raised money, I'm assuming, through the foundation for the engineering college?
Yes.
I'm assuming it's about two thousand twenty two, but I just wanted clarification.
Well, we've raised money for the engineering school over the course of several years. And I think it started, if Ms. serves me correctly, around two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen is when it started. We continue to raise money for the engineering school.
Oh, for the building itself?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious because can you explain what the service and recognition column entails?
Yes. For example, Ricky McCurry, for the record. For example, if an attorney decides to give us free professional services, his time, her time, then that is a gift that the IRS does not recognize. So your service, you may charge five hundred dollars an hour, and you give us two hours. That's a thousand dollars to you in terms of what you've done for the university. So we want to recognize that. We want to thank you for that. But we can't account for it as part of the IRS standards.
That makes sense. Are there any particularly larger gifts in this column?
Yes. For example, we have a relationship with Switch, which gives us access to their computing facilities and all at a factor of about ten million dollars. So we have everything from gifts of that nature to the Bellagio may give us, you know, ten hotel nights that we can use for visiting faculty, for example.
Okay. So with that information, this, so I took the liberty, and I'm going to share it with my colleagues. And for everyone up north and online, I just sent you an email. I went ahead and looked at this budget. And for folks in the audience, I looked at the fundraising totals that were shared to us. You can see the three columns. The first year is the fiscal year, the second year is the total, and the third is the services. And I think somebody looking at this might actually look, I know it says with services, but somebody might actually add the two columns. When really, to get the total number of fundraised, the money in the door and not the in-kind, you would subtract it. So that's what I'm offering my colleagues. And so I know it's not wrong, but it feels like it's not exactly the most transparent way to articulate the numbers. So please take a look at those as we kind of go through this. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was actually during the pandemic. You mentioned two thousand twenty one specifically. But a simple Google search will tell you that businesses were literally booming. Money was flowing, universities across the nation were showing, raised records of funds. Even every institution within our own system showed that. I pulled this report showing that from GivingUSA, saying that the universities across the country actually showed an increase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty one by thirteen point two percent. Two thousand twenty one was actually the strongest year, followed second by two thousand twenty. So I'm wondering what happened with UNLV. Are we just not telling our story well? Do we have bad outreach plan? Are we not training our staff to make the ask appropriately?
Ricky McCurry, for the record, and thank you for the question, Regent Brown. First, I think there's a couple of things to unpack in that. During the pandemic, some institutions were able to maintain and even increase their fundraising totals. All institutions were not. And a lot of it depended on the maturity of the actual fundraising program itself, as to whether or not they were able to generate funds or not. And I can certainly pull some information that's produced by the Council for Advancement and Support of Education, the Education Advisor Board, and Association of Governing Board to share with you with respect to that. And then the second point that I would make, just in terms of the actual situation with UNLV during the pandemic also, was the fact that we had some open fundraising positions, which also impacted our fundraising during that time. Second thing I would say with respect to that is it also, fundraising success really boils down to the success of the individual fundraisers, their experience, their training. And a number of our fundraisers are actually, quite frankly, are new to fundraising. And we have, I've been here now for four years. We've actually started recruiting people who have had experience outside of UNLV, who are more senior in their fundraising experience. Whereas in two thousand twenty one, we had some younger inexperienced fundraisers. All of that contributes to your ultimate fundraising success. So while I say the pandemic is a part of it, certainly I don't mean to imply that pandemic was all of it. There's a lot of things that go into it. And then the final thing I would say with respect to that is I mentioned the fact that universities do major campaigns every three to five years. We haven't done one in twelve years. The biggest problem with the fact that we haven't done a campaign in over twelve years is that all of the momentum that was developed during the course of that campaign is lost. So we are like actually doing the very first campaign because we don't have anything to build upon.
So if we're going to break down, and I'm happy to share a copy of this with you, just so we can all work off of the same numbers. But I'll walk it up to you in a second. So I went ahead and subtracted the fundraising totals minus the services. And then I divided it up, two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, which was on this spreadsheet, and then two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty four. The average was sixty one million, four hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty three cents in the years twenty five to two thousand twenty. But two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty four was only, the average was forty one million, eight hundred, or four hundred and seventy eight thousand and five dollars and fifty five cents. So I think I understand what you're saying about, you know, we're missing staff and things like that. But it's almost a thirty, thirty-three percent decrease. And while we're saying that, on page four of the supplemental material, again, I had just graduated UNLV, so I remember this. But I think there's an error, and I did a simple Google search. The last campaign actually ended in two thousand ten, and it raised five hundred and thirty seven million dollars, at least according to a news article that came out around that time. And so I bring this up because I think my concern is around the data that you choose to present and the guesstimate of dates and the rounded figures. It actually makes me not confident in, you know, future plans if I can't even get historical data accurately. I will identify that in two thousand thirteen. I know Neil Sumatra's tried for a five hundred million dollar campaign. That was unsuccessful for a myriad of reasons. But this would be going into year five of this team. And so I'm wondering what took so long to get started, if it's supposed to happen every three to five years? Because at this point, it would have been fourteen years. And I acknowledge that, you know, that's starting over, but we've had four years to start over. But more importantly, I have to also do the math. And when you add up the last four years, that only equals a hundred and sixty five million dollars, nine hundred and twelve thousand and twenty two dollars. And so I really can't understand, even with smaller campaigns, how we could feasibly get conservatively to raise seven hundred and fifty million over ten years. I'll just take the lower end of your two numbers. That would be an increase of thirty three million, thirty three million, five hundred and twenty one thousand, nine hundred and ninety four dollars and fifty cents every year on top of the average of what we've been raising. So small campaigns, facility program, people, grow endowments, that's what I took from your presentation. But it just doesn't feel like there's like meat and potatoes here. And given that the delta and numbers are off, and I just, I want to know, how are we actually going to do this? How do we actually sit here and be confident that this is not just a plan for a plan, but it actually has some strategic thought behind it?
Well, thank you for that comment, Regent Brown, Ricky McCurry, for the record. You're absolutely right in terms of it's a challenge. There's no question about that. But also, we understand, and that's why we're doing what we're doing in terms of reaching out to engage our alumni, reaching out to engage community, reaching out to expand our plan-given program, which was virtually nonexistent, reaching out to expand our corporate and foundation relations. Because we do believe that, again, that UNLV is a product, if you will, that people are interested in supporting. But we have work to do. We have to do a better job of telling our stories. We have to find those people who will give us six- and seven-figure gifts. We have to steward the ones that have already given to us. And that's why it's important that, you know, we do the activities before the football games, and we do the activities before the basketball games, and that's why we take things on the road. So no, it's not by, no stretch of the imagination is it going to be easy. But I will also say, Regent Brown, the other thing that you have to take in consideration when you look at one of our challenges, and you can research higher education and fundraising, and there's a direct correlation between turnovers and leadership transition, both at the university and the foundation, and the impact that that has on your fundraising program. And so, you know, I've spent the last thirty years doing this, have been involved in four major campaigns, raised over two billion dollars. And I've been in some situations that's very similar to UNLV. And so it's something that we have to do because, first of all, the university deserves it. The university needs it. And then once we get this one off the ground. The university needs it. And then once we get this one off the ground, then we need to make sure that we don't ever allow ourselves to go for a dozen years without doing another. So yes, the challenge is there, but we're up for the challenge. And we have a foundation board who is engaged, who's interested, who's dedicated to this. And that's why the $752 billion effort came as a result of the foundation board's leadership in the strategic plan.
I mean, I have no doubt that you have a strong leadership on the foundation. They are staples in the community. You did mention something about building up infrastructure. Can you go into that?
Yes. One of the, one of the challenges in terms of our infrastructure is our, what we call Alumni Development Database, or some people would call it a CRM. In that our CRM is dated, and we need to update the CRM that we have because it will allow us a better tool to track our fundraisers' efforts. It will give us a better tool to manage our metrics and our key performance indicators with respect to that. It will give us an opportunity to really, if she's moved to being able to fundraise the way individuals want to be fundraised from. You know, fundraising has become a very personalized situation. And each person wants to have, you address them and approach them in a way that they want to. And so being able to gather all the data and being able to store that data, being able to analyze that data, being able to utilize that data to help then develop the approaches to individuals for their fundraising support is going to be critical. So that's one example of infrastructure. The other example is having the appropriate staff in place. One of the things that President Whitfield did in working with the foundation board is committed some $1.2 million to help us to grow the staff. That was money that we had had in soft money that the president has converted to actual hard money so that the foundation can count on that money being there to help grow our staff. So from an infrastructure perspective, the biggest piece is the database. But then also making sure that we have the appropriate staffing.
Regent Brown for the record. So you talk about a database. Can you tell me what we use now, what you're planning on, what would be a perfect solution to solving this?
We currently use what is called a Razer's Edge NXT. And Razer's Edge NXT was designed to support, support small not-for-profits. It's not designed to support major research universities that are complex like UNLV. We are in the process, and again, we've had some consultants come in and take a look at us and talk to us about what our options are. Salesforce has a product that is one option that we're looking at. And then there's another, there's, well, actually there are two Salesforce options. One is a, what Salesforce calls their third-party relationship. So they have a vendor, who's a third-party vendor, who has a program that sits on the Salesforce platform. So that's one option. And then Salesforce has now developed what it's called Education Cloud, which is its own product that serves as a CRM. So those are two options that we're looking at, and we've been talking to the foundation board about personally.
So I'm very familiar with Salesforce. I also know that it's super expensive and labor-intensive to keep it up. Because at the end of the day, having another platform without maybe a different strategy, I don't know if that's really a value add. I also know that if you're not asking the right questions, you're never going to get the right answer. And bad data in means bad data out. So it actually makes me concerned that you're telling me that there's vacancies. But we will have to hire more people if you're moving into a new CRM to manage it. And I also look at this because, I, look, I work with a lot of founders. And at the end of the day, the buck stops with them. And that's what I wanted to hear, was that like, if you're having high turnover of staff or people aren't showing, you know, people are, there's vacancies, and then we're blaming a database, we're looking at teams, like, that's actually not a vote of confidence either. And I think, you know, data being skewed, not really having, you know, accountability while we're standing up there, like, it, it does frustrate me because there's so much potential. This is our state's largest institution, but the numbers don't reflect it. So you started talking about like the alumni, and 70% of UNLV alumni live in Clark County. So I love that you guys are going to San Diego and going to Washington DC. I did visit the, the happier you had during the fly-in. But other than the upscale, richer neighborhoods in town, how are we engaging with the 70% of the alumni that live here?
Well, we're, we're doing a lot of activities through our alumni engagement. Again, whether we talk about engaging our alumni through our advocacy program, whether we're talking about what we're doing with our student philanthropy program and connecting alumni with students, whether we're talking about our alumni career services where we're, we're working with alumni. We have a host of program and all that we're seeking to engage our alumni. And it starts with catching them while they're students. And so the fact that we've started a student philanthropy and alumni program is going to serve us extremely well. An example of that is two years ago, we started what we called our gratitude program. And for every graduating senior who would make a contribution, they would get a green cord for graduation. They call it gratitude cord. In the first two years of that program, we had over 750 students to give $15,000 in two years. So, so that shows that, you know, you start while they're students, then as they go into alumni, you want to continue to do that. We're also growing our alumni network system that we're putting in place where alumni can actually run events and activities for us without having to be staff, you know, staff-intensive, but actually having the alumni lead those activities. So, so we're making a lot of efforts to engage alumni. You know, right now, our alumni given percentage is about 4%. We're trying to drive that percentage to about 8%. The national average for public universities is about 8%. So we have work to do, but that's also opportunities that we have with respect to that.
Last question before I turn it over to the rest of my colleagues. And I do love that graduation cord thing. I think that's a very symbolic way to get them not only just engaged at commencement, but, but post. So that's, I really like that. My last question is, how are we specifically monetizing fundraising campaigns around being a minority-serving institution? And how are we utilizing being an R1 in our fundraising campaign?
We're using being an R1 particularly effectively with foundations and corporations. That's where there are great opportunities, R1 institutions. And working on campus, we are looking to have some interdisciplinary program that we can present to corporations and foundations for support. So that, that's very important as we, as we try to, to drive that, that aspect of what we do. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a great opportunity for us. And we have actually raised a lot of money in terms of scholarship support. But we also have to be careful because there are some legal limitations as to what we can do with respect to scholarship support and making sure that we're not making them a race-exclusive or gender-exclusive kinds of opportunities. So we've worked with our donors who really want to have race-exclusive or gender-exclusive, for example, scholarships. And we've worked terminology that will allow them to focus on minority students at the same time not being exclusive. So we've had some success in doing that, and there's a lot of people who want to be supportive of that. And that's both individuals as well as corporations and foundations.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. I'd like to go back to slide number three on your presentation. And it shows two fiscal years and two columns of numbers. If we could go back to that to start. And I, I'm asking that because someone sent me another slide that left off a column on the right-hand side, and that column said cash and new commitments. And so that column plus the service recognition and gifts, of course, added up to the fundraising totals reported. And I wondered to know why you would leave that column off for our report.
Regent DelCarlo, I'm not sure what, what reports you received, but when we report our fundraising totals, we report caches, cash gifts, as well as pledges. So when you see fundraising totals, that includes cash and pledges. But I can certainly give you a breakdown of the actual cash that came in each one of those years as well.
Okay, because this, this column actually says, Ricky, that it's cash and new commitments. And someone obviously wanted me to know that, or they wouldn't have sent it to me. And they were questioning and wanted me to question why it wasn't on your report. So we'll just start with that. So sometimes, we only know as much as sometimes you're willing to tell us. And so I was, I wasn't sure about that. And I have some questions too. Foundation dinner. I see you postponed it till spring next year. You didn't have a foundation dinner this year. I would like to know why you didn't. And I, you know, what kind of money do you raise? I mean, usually this is, I've been to that before. I remember record attendance one year there. I think there was over 1,000 people. Isn't that a huge moneymaker for your foundation?
Ricky McCurry for the record, and thank you, Regent DelCarlo. No, the, actually, the annual dinner is really designed to break even. We generally make about $200,000 on that, and that's seed money for a year. The foundation board has began to talk about how do we transition that to a philanthropic activity? Because that's not historically what it has been. It has not been designed as a fundraiser. It wasn't until two years ago that we even offered a silent auction as a way to generate actual philanthropic dollars and to move beyond just enough to cover the expenses.
Okay. I know lots of different departments speak to each other through the campuses. And I just recently attended the annual fundraiser for Western Nevada College, and that's our smallest college, smallest. You have almost 33,000 students. They have around 3,300 students. They raised netted at their gala this year. It was in August, Reach for the Stars. They netted $125,000. That's a huge amount for a small school. And if you scale that up to a school your size, I just don't understand why you bothered to even have this fundraiser then if you're not using it as a major fundraiser. I mean, it's wonderful to get together and have a fancy fun dinner, but, I mean, the whole purpose of those normally are for fundraising. So I would, I would hope you guys look real hard at that one.
Thank you, thank you.
I also looked, I mean, it, people give because it's for students. I mean, it's hammered onto me everywhere I go on the institutions that when you're raising monies from the foundations, these go back into scholarships. And all of our institutions are so very proud how much money they raise for scholarships. And I think that's one of the reasons why the board is so reluctant to ever raise tuition because the more we have to, if we have to raise tuition, then you have to raise more money for scholarships. It becomes almost a vicious cycle. So that's just kind of my little thing. But I want to go back to what you were saying about this campaign that you want to do because I just don't see, see how you're going to be able to do it. You want to raise 750 million, no, 750 million to $1 billion in 15 years. Is that right? Did I understand that right?
Over a 10-year period, Regent DelCarlo.
Over a 10-year period? Okay, I got to do my math different. I thought you said 15 years. So let's see, because if it was 15 years, you'd raise 300 million. So what's 25,000 times 800 times 10? That would be what? Somebody help me. I got to get my calculator going. I don't see how you're going to raise that kind of money with those numbers. I just don't. So it's 25,000 times 800. That's 20, 20 million times, am I doing this wrong? 200 million. 200 million. That's 200 million. So where's the other, let's see, my math, 750, 550 million got to come from?
Well, I, I think one thing, Regent, I'll call her Ricky McCurry for the record. One thing is that we have, and I mentioned a capacity analysis. When the consultants came in, they looked at the people that we have who are alumni, who are our friends, who are included in our database. And they determined that that database had a net worth of over $3 billion. And so the honest is on us to work with those individuals within that database to move them to a point where they want to commit to the institution. And again, there are, there are people out there, and every day we're finding people. I mentioned, you know, that some of the recent gifts that we received, I mentioned that we added nine new people to the, to the Palladium Society. I mentioned the efforts that the president has undertaken to reach and find new individuals that may not even be in our database that could add to, to that process. So again, we, we understand it's an uphill, uphill battle. But we also know that with that kind of potential in our database and with the right efforts, that we, we have the possibility and a good possibility of actually hitting that target.
Okay. Another question. I know at graduation, I've been to many, and it's really wonderful to get the students involved with the Alumni Association. They offer them a free membership into the Alumni Association. So my question is, do they get that free for life? Or is that just the first year they graduate, and then you try to bring them into your Alumni Association? I'm asking that because I know when my husband and I graduated from UNR, we decided to join our Alumni Association as a lifetime member. So it was a pretty good chunk of change at the time, but we thought over time, and you know, this is like 50 years ago now, so it's been a really good investment. So I'm wondering if you're doing that too?
Well, actually, we used to have a dues membership paying Alumni Association. In 2018, the Alumni Association made the decision to do away with dues. And so anyone who graduates from UNLV become a member of the Alumni Association. And what they've tried, what we're trying to do is drive people to be philanthropic and provide philanthropic support. But there are no membership dues. You are a rebel for life, and that starts the moment you walk across that stage.
Your microphone is off, Regent DelCarlo.
Yes, thank you. And I do like the green cord idea too. That was really good. We did get a notice from the president yesterday about the Palladium Society. And I, I think that's wonderful that you do that. You're the only ones that recognize, that I know of, any donor over $1 million and over, which, you know, for somebody that would, will never be in that category. I mean, I really applaud the people that have that kind of wealth and, and give back to the university. So that's terrific. But I, I did see that you had a social event, and I don't recall any regents being invited to that. And we do oversee all the foundations. And I just kind of wondered why we didn't even get invited to that. I mean, in my whole time on this board, 13 regents have never shown up to anything socially or a special event. I just, you know, it's nice to be invited. Even if we can't come, it's just nice to know we feel appreciated. So I, I don't even want to hear the answer on that. And I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Goodman and then Regent Breaker.
Thank you. So the numbers are down, and I just, you're getting beat up today. And, and you know, the numbers are down, but I just, I want to let you know that I want to see, I want to see this get, get, let's get the money up. Let's, let's maybe brainstorm. Let's, let's maybe brainstorm. Let's figure out a way how, so many regions on this board have resources. And your foundation has resources. And I just wanted to offer, I, I wanted to offer my help. And, and, and as regions and as Foundation Board members, I think that there's some work to be done. I've, I've heard some donors that, you know, are not as happy. And, and, and I've heard that there's donors that are really happy. So I mean, we just really need to kind of maybe brainstorm and get together and figure out a way to move forward. And, and I'd like to help with that. You know, I, I want to see UNLV succeed. You know, the, the fundraising numbers are, you know, not where they should be. And there's, there's ways to get them back. And, and I just, I just wanted to say that I want to see UNLV succeed. I want to see you succeed. And if there's anything that this board or anything I think that the Foundation Board can do, that we, we want to see you succeed. And, and I'm not saying that we know how to do your job by any means, but I am saying that we all have relationships.
Thank, thank, thank you very much, Ricky McCurry for the record. Thank you very much, Regent Goodman. And, and we certainly appreciate that offer and certainly would like to encourage and invite all of you to help us in this process because you're right, it boils down to relationships. And, and then if we have the relationships, then the investment come. We can't go out and get the investment first. We really got to develop the relationship. So anything you can do and willing to do to help with that, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Regent Brager.
Oh, shoot. Now I pressed it one time too many. Okay. Susan Brager for the record, and thank you for being here and answering all the questions that were thrown at you. I just want to say, and it's not in defense of anything, but in 2021, with the numbers going as low, I do believe our state was unique. It was more closed down than any state across the United States. And I, I think that's, that equates why the monies were dropped as much as they did. And then they did pick up pretty good in '22. So I agree with a lot of things that were said, but with Regent, Regent Goodman, that we do know people, and I mean, quite frankly, I'm tired of fundraising after seven campaigns myself. But, you know, now that I'm not doing it for me, it might be easier to do it for other things. But I think that that's right. We are, we're a team. I mean, it might not always sound like it up here, but the more information we get, the better we can relate with you. And I think that's important to know. The sooner we get it, the more open it is, as transparent as it can be. We're not here to, to fight the system. We're here to make it better. We don't do this, I'm just going to say it for the money, I can't resist. We do it because we really care, you know, and campaigns are tough, even for Regent, quite frankly. So know that we're really on your side even when it doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I wanted to echo a little bit of what Regent Goodman said. We're, we are here to help you, especially those of us who are, are proud graduates of UNLV. I think that, that, the development of, of those relationships is very important. So I would encourage you to do that. I have to say that on, on this day, that, that this meeting that we've spent a lot of time on, on areas of improvement for UNLV, it, I don't know when this capital campaign was decided upon, but it's, it's a little disheartening that today is the day that we're hearing about it. I wish we, we could have heard about it before this meeting. But I, I do want to say that I think you have our support. And I hope that you're successful with this campaign. I think, I think it is very important. I've heard, I, I've heard people in the community saying that they feel a little bit left out these days. So I think it's important that, that we bring them back in and, and re-energize that, that, those relationships. And, and I do want to say that I've been told that today is your, your, your work anniversary, your four-year work anniversary. So congratulations on that. And I, I wish you success going forward. So with that, I'll move on. I, unless there are any other questions or comments from regions or President Whitfield, if you had anything to add. But thank you for, for spending time with us today, Vice President McCurry. We should have this FaceTime a lot more often. I think it's important for the foundation to report, that all of the foundations to report to the board. And that's something that I've been vocal about. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could, for the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Thank you all for this day. We appreciate both the support and the critiques. And I want to encourage you all to provide us with what you've done, which is, is, is sometimes where we're missing the mark, but to provide us with very specific sorts of things. Because as you know, there's, there's, I forgot who brought it up, but there's, there's all of these different mechanisms that go on with the university. And the coordinating of them actually has to change over time. When I started this position, it is nowhere where, close to where it was afterwards. Actually, Ricky brought up one of the most important things was, was that I had heard for years that positions were promised for philanthropy and never came. And so, you know, I'm still just looking at some of these record, these numbers and thinking that, you know, there, there are waves that occur that you have to capitalize on. There's other things that go on that you capitalize on. And so we deal in a very, very dynamic and quick-moving kind of world. But I can tell you that we're going to, I've been taking some notes on what you've been saying and seeing if there's ways in which we can try to increase the amount of communication, the detail that we give. I think sometimes we put our heads down and just try to work, but we need to be picking them up and actually using you all as a resource. And we're going to do a better job at that. So thank you very much for today.
Thank you. I'll move on to item seven, new business. Regent Brown.
Regent Brown for the record. I have a couple new business items. So first, I would like a report on what specific donation campaigns were run around upgrading our campus safety protocols. How much do donors give and what is the delta of the campaign goal in order to close out that specific campaign? I didn't get a chance to ask that earlier, so new business it is. I'd also like a follow-up from when this capital campaign report that we just talked about would actually start. I see in the foundings, in the, in the paperwork, sorry, that we're in the planning phase, but having a tentative start date would be helpful. Next, I would like a report on the UNLV Research Foundation. I'd like to know its history of why it was formed, an understanding of its purpose today, and a report on the five-year plan. And I'd also like an update on the fourth floor of Blackfire. I want to ensure Boyd Gaming is happy with its relationship and that the staff has a plan to make it a value add to UNLV students. We never heard why Caesars left, but I'm sure there's a backstory there, and we'd all like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Hearing none? Oh, yes, Regent McMichael.
Yes, I would like to propose new business. If one other, or I'm sorry, two other regions would like to help pen to paper a requirement that we can make free and constitutionally protected speech illegal and that we should be able to require system, campus police to go in and break up any demonstration, which is also covered under the First Amendment, and allow them to take these individuals to jail. If any other regions would like to add their name to that, so you can bring this to a vote, I'd like to end the First Amendment when it comes to free speech.
Is there any other public, or I'm sorry, new business? With that, I'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is none at this time.
Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno?
There is none at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment here in Las Vegas? I don't see any. Is there any pub? Yes, Regent McMichael.
Yes, I have public comment. This is Regent McMichael, N-C-M-I-C-H-A-E-L. I would like for our council to explain to us exactly what the term legally non-binding means in reference to the IRA statement. I think we all need to be educated on what that term actually means. If you could please, either Chris or Mr. Wickson, I would like to know that before the end of this meeting. And we do not need to take this offline. Please elaborate.
This is not public comment. This is a, a legal opinion somewhat. So this can be discussed outside of the meeting. I, we don't need to discuss this at this time. Is there any other public comment in Las Vegas?
If you would ask the council whether or not they can make that statement.
Jimmy Martinez for the record, we, we do not engage in conversation during public comments. It's time for the public to make comment that they wish to make for the record.
Thank you. SES, is there any public comment on the phone? Thank you. So at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting at 2:03.